Microns open.
Hi, Mike.
I don't know if his microphone is open.
Please open.
What's coming up?
Coming up where? Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Mr. Donlin, how was the sound?
I told this out last night.
It sounds a little light, but I can hear you.
Yeah, but I don't think that's all you're gonna do. I gotta whisper right now.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. A quick notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Trust, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle, and secondary school website in the district. Roll call.
This is Cameron Eddy.
On.
Mr. Donlin.
Here.
Mr. Jaimo. Mr. Heffernan.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here.
This is Tobacco.
Here.
This is Wright.
Here.
Mr. Capone.
Here.
Mrs. Minwies.
Here.
Mr. Jaimo is here.
Okay, thank you.
Amy?
Yes, I hear you.
Thank you.
Before we say the pledge, I'd like to have a moment of silence afterwards for Kathy Marion, a retired Bay Shore Middle School math teacher, passed away on February 9th. Mrs. Marion began her career in Middletown High School, where she met and later married her husband Joseph Marion, who served the district as a social studies supervisor in our high schools. After taking some time off while her children were young, Mrs. Marion returned to what she loved to do at Bay Shore Middle School, where she stayed until she retired in 2002. One of her greatest pleasures was seeing her former students around town. We extend our sincere condolences to the Marion family. Please stand for the pledge and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
Just like to say, send a condolences to the Marion family. Mrs. Marion was a tremendous person, tremendous family. To the Marion family, sorry to hear the news. My condolences, it's just a tremendous family with sad news. And, you know.
She will deeply be missed. She was a very important part of our school community for many, many years, her and her husband.
Mr. and Mrs. Marion were tremendous assets and tremendous people.
Okay, at this time, we would like to open the public comments to agenda items only. Mr. Rotolo.
For those in the audience. For those in the audience who would like to make a comment or ask a question, you could locate your raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom dashboard. Selecting the icon will put you into a queue. We'll bring you into the room to make your comment, ask your question. We ask that you please provide your name and address for the record before making a vote about it. Thank you.
This meeting has not seen any hands raised at this time.
Oh, good, okay. With that said, I'd like to close the public comment portion. And we need a motion for Finance A. The resolution for the hiring of our new lawyer. Mr. Bruce Pedulla.
Mrs. Cameron, you make a motion.
I made a motion.
Second. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Cameron Eddy?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin. Mr. Donlin.
Sorry, Amy, my vote is no.
Mr. Jaimo. Mr. Jaimo. Mr. Heffernan?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
No.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
No.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Mrs. Minwies?
Yes.
I'll call for Mr. Jaimo one more time. Mr., I can see you.
I'm here.
Oh, would you like to make a vote on the motion for the appointment of Larry Chakobie Althea Jacobs?
Yes, I would, thank you. Vote is no.
Motion carries with five affirmative votes.
Congratulations, Mr. Pedulla, welcome to Middletown.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now I need to have a resolution to go into executive session.
So move.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, it's going to executive session.
Oh, where are you? I don't see you. Oh, I see, okay, now I'm in the wrong place. I was in the Zoom, okay. All right, now I'm good, okay. Yeah, there we go, okay, I'm gonna get off of Zoom. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Welcome back everybody, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the
the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices, and each elementary, middle, and secondary school website in the district. Roll call. Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Donlin?
Here.
Here, Amy.
Here.
Mr. Heffernan? Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco? Mrs. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here.
Mrs. Benewies? Yeah. Okay, we're going to start tonight with our annual financial report. We have a presentation this evening by Matt Holman, partner with Holman, Frendy, and Allison. Holman, Frendy, and Allison completed the audit of our financial statements for the year end June 30th, 2020. It is a little later than usual. There were some delays in getting some of the foot-known information that we need from the state for disclosure. But here we are. So, Matt, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you very much. I think that was Amy. I couldn't see her, but I definitely heard her. All right. Good evening, everyone. As Amy said, I was the engagement partner for the Board of Education Audit for the year. And again, yeah, this is probably rung true for almost every thing that has happened this year. Like everything else, COVID has delayed us a little bit in what we were able to, you know, the timeliness with when we were able to perform the audit. The state was also delaying getting us some information that they needed to on their side. So we did meet all the statutory deadlines as far as getting the audit in, but unfortunately, we are presenting the audit now, and it's for your June 30th of 2020 year. All right. With that being said, though, I must say the district did a great job. It was challenging to have us onsite for only probably a quarter of the time. We were able to perform most of our duties remotely. We did get through a lot of the testing. It was definitely a challenge for us to pivot this year, but I think overall it was very successful. We were able to get all the information that we needed to complete the audit. And I especially thank the business office because they did a great job in, you know, also pivoting and being able to provide us that information. So with that being said, hopefully, everybody has seen the audit at this point. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of the items in there. It's a rather large document. I definitely didn't want to go through it in detail. But if there are any questions, please feel free to ask. I'm also available at any point. You can give any questions that you might have as well through the business office, and they definitely can get them over to me. But for right now, the first thing I'd like to highlight, and you can find this on page 13 of the audit, and it's the Certificate of Excellence that the district has received. Now, this is probably, ever since I've been involved with the district, this is a certification that's been given to the district. And it's really something to be proud of, and I think that it's important to highlight this. This is probably year, Amy, you may know better than me at this point, but year 10 or so in a row at least, I would imagine, could be longer than that, that the district has received this award, and it comes from the National ASBO Association. And, you know, there's probably, I think right now, there's only about five or six other Board of Educations within Monmouth County that have this certificate. And really, it just solidifies that the report that you're seeing in front of you meets the highest of standards when it comes to financial reporting, and that's throughout the nation. So it's a very impressive certificate to have, so I just wanted to highlight that again and point that out. After that, on page 17 of the audit, you will see really the most important document that we're providing, and that's the independent auditor's report. Okay? And I'm happy to say that this is the cleanest opinion that can be rendered for a school district. What you see here, it's an unmodified opinion, and that just really means that there was no need for us to modify the standard audit opinion. Okay? If we did come across any problems, areas, or we weren't able to substantiate any of the numbers that were shown in the audit report, this is where we would tell you that we either needed to modify the opinion, or we had to give an adverse opinion if we ran into a really bad circumstance. But I'm happy to say this is an unmodified opinion. Again, it's the best opinion that can be rendered for a school district. All right. The next page I definitely would like to highlight for you, there's three different financial presentations within the audit report. The most important one to me, and the one that I think is most important for you to hone in on, is the C1 exhibit. And that's really, that's located on page 100 of the audit, and it runs from page 100 all the way to page 111. And here, you'll see, this is a rundown of your revenues versus your expenditures versus the budget that's been approved by the school district. Okay? So it's your actual revenues and your actual expenditures versus the budget that was put together at the beginning of the year. So to me, it really gives you the best flavor for how the district is performing on a day-to-day, year-to-year basis. And if you were to look on the bottom of page 111, you will see that there is a recapitulation of the fund balance. And I like to just highlight this page in particular because it does show the fund balance for the school district at year end. And Middletown this year had an increase of $4.9 million from $8.6 million, so the year-end fund balance as of 6/30/2020 is sitting at $13.5 million. Now, it's very important to note that while there's $13.5 million sitting there below in our recapitulation of the fund balance, you will see that there are reserves of monies that make up that fund balance. So the capital reserve, for example, is sitting at $2.3 million, which is money that has been set aside for future capital needs of the district. You have maintenance reserve of $1 million, which is sitting there again for future maintenance needs of the school district. You have a legal reserve that's sitting there for $2.2 million. There is excess surplus of $889,000. There's then assigned fund balance, and this year, again with COVID, it's a little bit different. That seems like a very big increase, but in reality, what has happened is the spending hasn't really been, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't as, there wasn't as much spending this year in relation to the prior year. So what you end up seeing here is that there's a big reserve for encumbrances of $3.4 million. So that money is actually going to roll into your next year's budget, and you're going to be able to spend that money in the 2021 budget year. That leaves you with an unassigned fund balance of $3.4 million, and that's the maximum that the district can carry over into the 2021 year. All right. Other than that, in the report, I also like to highlight page 199, and this is our second opinion that we really, that we give on the district here. And this opinion on page 199, I'm just flipping to it myself here. Give me one second. This is your independent auditor's report on internal controls over financial reporting. So what this means is that while we're performing our audit, we're doing all the testing that we have to do, all the compliance testing, the other substantive testing that we provide to the district, or we do for the district. During all that testing, if we had come across any internal control issues that we consider to be a significant deficiency or a material weakness for the school district, this is where you would see that reported for the school district. And again, I'm happy to say, this is an unmodified opinion here. We did not have to change the standardized language. We also did not have to include any internal control weaknesses that were noted during the audit. All right, and that leads us to our last opinion. There's three actually in this entire report, and this being the final one that we give here, and it starts on page 201. And this opinion is actually the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major program. Okay? Really, what that means, anytime that a school district spends over $750,000 on state grant money or federal grant money, what kicks in is a single audit for the school district. So in the case for Middletown, they were well above $750,000 in expenditures for state and federal. So a federal and a state single audit were performed independently, really two, you can almost view that as two separate audits in addition to the regular financial statement audit. And again, I'm happy to say that this is an unmodified opinion on those grants that we drilled down into do a single audit on. All right, and we also had no other issues to report here that were compliance in nature. All right, and that really concludes the presentation of our audit reports that are there. Once again, a very clean audit, and I thank the business office. They really worked hard. This year brought challenges that we have never seen in the past, and honestly, Amy and Denise did a great job working through that and providing us with everything that we asked for. We put them through a lot, and it does take a lot of time to accumulate that information, especially when you're facing the challenges that we were this year. So once again, I thank you, and if there's any questions, I can certainly go over anything else that anybody might have.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to say, Matt, you and your office were very helpful. We, on top of the pandemic and everything else, we also had a software conversion right at the end of the year, and we switched accounting systems, closed out the year in the new system, and Matt and his team were helpful in getting that all transitioned over well. So we appreciate that, too.
Thank you.
They had a lot of patience. Thank you, and thank you, Amy, for all you, you and your department have done. Well, it's definitely a team, Denise Barosa and Debbie Calvert. Good. Glad to hear it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Everybody have a great evening.
You, too. Thanks, Matt. Mary Ellen, did you want to do an update?
No, actually, Amy's going to do.
The budget?
Budget, yeah.
Okay, a budget presentation. Mr. Rotolo is going to display that on the screen. We wanted to give an update on where we are with the budget process at this point in time. And if you remember, last month, we did a background sort of status challenges type presentation, you know, to let you know what we were going to be dealing with coming into the budget development process for 2122. So right now, we have a collection of slides that are, is based, based snapshot of where we are right now in developing the budget. So we just want to share that with the board. In addition to this overview, we've been talking about specifics of budget areas in our various committees. We will have all the committee report outs a little later in the meeting, but we've been breaking down, you know, individual areas of the committees as well. So as of right now, I know this is going to be hard, I think most of you have it at your desk, but we just wanted to give an overview of where we are with our projected revenue. So taking the 20, that's a typo there, it should be 2021, and then the 2122 revenue that we have proposed. As you can see, the changes, the majority of our revenue comes from our tax levy. We have built in at this point a 2% increase in the tax levy that is allowable by statute to be included in our budget, and that will produce for us an increase in revenue of about $2.9 million for next year. We also have an estimate here for state aid, and we are in the fourth year of the implementation of the S2 reallocation of state aid. We are anticipating a decrease in our state aid for next year of almost $1.1 million. So we will not have the final number until after the governor's budget address. We're hoping that we'll hear something next week, but that is what we're estimating at this point. So again, that will change. I'm sure that we didn't estimate it right to the dollar. So, you know, that is estimated at this point. For extraordinary aid, we are including in the budget $1.5 million. Our extraordinary aid for last fiscal year was $1.6 million. We actually received it in two payments. Originally, they gave us $1.4 million, then we got another $100,000 or so to bring it up to the $1.6 million. We never know what that is, just to remind everybody. We won't know even what this year's state extraordinary aid is till after the year is over. It always lags. But we do include it as a revenue in the budget to support our expenditures. Our other local sources and interests, that includes obviously interest and includes tuition that we receive from our preschool students and also from students that come into some of our special programs in the district, from other districts. We do get tuition from that. It does include also the amount that we have been allocated through our contract with the YMCA for next year, and we'll be talking about that a little bit in our finance committee, you know, as far as for this year, how it will go. But we did include that as well. We also are including capital reserve use for allowable projects. There are certain projects that you can charge off to the capital reserve, actually, that Matt Holman just mentioned. So we are budgeting to use almost $1.3 million of that to support projects in next year's budget. We are also budgeting to take some money out of our maintenance reserve to support our facilities operations. Our federal semi-revenue, that is an amount that's given to us by the state that we have to budget. It's basically our share of Medicaid reimbursement that we get for certain services that we provide here in the district. So they give us that number, the budget. We get one-third of that, of the revenue, and the state gets two-thirds. But our one-third, we're being told, should be $212,000. We also have, over the past few years, started doing increased amount of joint shares in transportation, where we are sharing routes with other districts for out-of-district routes. We are anticipating to generate revenue of $800,000 in sharing those costs with other districts. Then the routes are budgeted in our transportation budget. But we've been very aggressive in trying to reach out to other districts and make some combinations that make sense. This year, and this was also mentioned when we went over the audit, we do actually have excess surplus from the June 30th, 2020 fiscal year of $989,000. We don't normally have that. We have not incorporated that into our budget over the past several years, but we were able to operate at some, somewhat of a savings during the June 30th, 2020 year. So some of those funds are now available to use for next year's budget, and they are in the budget as a revenue. So all told, that brings our revenues to $171,739,000, which is an increase over last year of about $3.7 million.
Hey, Amy?
Yes.
So the auditor mentioned, I guess, encumbrance difference is a 3.4. So how do we get to the maintenance reserve increase and the capital reserve increase? So I'm guessing that the 989 are from the excess from this year. So the 624, the 515, the 989 are excesses from the 2020, 2021 budget.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of that. The amounts that are in the budget for capital maintenance reserves are being taken out of the available balances that we had as of June 30th, 2020. So if you look at what's in the audit, the capital reserve, and we have, and we have a slide on this, you know, a little bit later, too, but these are being taken out of what's available as of June 30th, 2020. And then the excess surplus is the amount that we were, that was left over at the end of the year above the 2% that we are allowed to keep as fund balance for the district.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the capital increases in the maintenance is from, are actually capital maintenance items from 2020, 2021 that were moved, are they going to be pushed over to 2122?
No, we're actually budgeting to withdraw out of those reserves to fund projects in 2122. But we were able to make a deposit at the, in June of 2020. We approved a resolution authorizing deposits into those reserves if we had funds available. So that's how we were able to add some to the balance, but now we're subsequently taking that money out to fund projects, which is what we've done over the past several years.
Okay.
Okay. So if we go to the next slide, this breaks down our appropriations by major budget area. So we're showing year-over-year, 2020, 2021, and 21, 2021 and 2022. So this breaks it down the same way as it's broken down in the DOE budget. So the first line item is regular programs and instruction. We are budgeting $58,959,000 at this point. A change of about $495,000 or 0.8%. We'll go into some of the details of what these changes are, you know, in later slides. Then we have the other budget areas, special education, co-curricular athletics, tuition. You know, all these line items, attendance, health-related services, student support services, that's, you know, mainly CST related expenses, improving of instruction staff, that's PD and also some salaries that relate to supervisors that are supervisors of instruction. If you flip to the next page, we have our school and district central and IT administrative costs. We have operation and maintenance of plan, which is facilities, transportation, employee benefits, capital outlay. Charter schools, that's a number that we're given if we have students that live in Middletown or attending charter schools, the state requires that we some of our state aid goes to those charter schools. And then we transfer interest into the reserve accounts from the general fund. So that brings us to our total proposed appropriations at this point of 172,616,000 or a $4.8 million increase over the prior year and a change of 2.9%. So if you flip to the next page, if you've been keeping track of the numbers, at this point in time, we have projected revenue of 171,739. Projected appropriations of 172,616,000. So we still have somewhat of a budget shortfall that we're working on closing of $876,000. But again, there's a lot of moving parts here that we're going to go into later in the presentation. So we go into a little more detail on the revenue. We just wanted to give some historical perspective on the tax levy increases, just to remind everybody about the trend. So we took the tax levy increases going back to 2004, 2005 through the current proposed tax levy increase of 2%. These are the percentage increases. It's just interesting to see the the trend over the years obviously has been downward. At the beginning of this graph, there was not a cap of of 2% on the tax levy. So, you know, you can see in the 2004 or 5 year, the increase was close to 6%. And then it declined steadily until it got to a 4% cap and then a 2% cap in the 1011 year. Then the district had some years where it was below 2% and then at 2%. And then where you see a spike above 2% is where we've utilized some of our bank tax levy cap, which we'll talk about in a minute. And then, you know, evening out back down to 2% proposed for next year. So the next slide captures our bank tax levy cap. And just to refresh everyone's memory of what that represents, bank tax levy cap is when you have tax levy that's below what you would be allowed to assess in a budget. So normally, it's 2%. Sometimes it's more than 2% if there's waivers for things like insurance costs and, you know, there's a couple other enrollment waiver. There have been years where we have qualified for a waiver for insurance costs that we haven't used. And there's also been years that we've been below the 2%. So when you are below what your your allowable cap is for the tax levy, you're allowed to basically bank that unused authorized levy for three years and use it in a future budget if you need to. So over the years, since the concept of bank cap was was started back in 1112, we have generated a little over $8 million in total bank cap that we have not included in our tax levy in the year that we were able to. Out of that $8 million, about 4.6 million of that expired, meaning that we never used it. We it sat for three years. We did not put it in the tax levy. It's gone. We have utilized $3.4 million of that bank cap and included it in our tax levy in a subsequent year. So we also, you know, need to look at what was, what's the cumulative effect of our unused bank tax levy cap over the last 10 budget years? Because the expired bank cap that we never used, if we had had it in our tax levy and kept it in the tax levy each year, and then also had increases on that, that would have generated for the district over the last 10 years, almost another $50 million. So we just say that to put it in perspective, you know, that, you know, budgets have been within the cap or below the cap, and there's been a lot of tax levy that we have not assessed in our budgets. Currently, we don't have any bank tax levy cap available. We've utilized whatever was available. We didn't generate any last year. So we don't have any additional cap to tax levy to use. Looking at our state aid trend over the past 10 or 11 years, we went back to the 2010, 2011 year. And that was right at the time when the major state aid cuts that were done about 10 years ago took place between that 1011 year and the 1112 year. And you can see, you know, at that point, Middletown was being funded a little over $20 million in state aid. That number dropped to, you know, somewhere in the, you know, 12, 13 million dollar range. Then over subsequent years, you can see it did tick back up slightly, although never at the level that it was. You know, we did recover some of that and stayed pretty flat for several years until the implementation of S two, which we talked about earlier. So since the implementation of S two, where we're going to be losing aid over a seven-year period, this is when our our state aid has, you know, now begun to tick down again. And our endpoint for S two is supposed to be, you know, about where we were, you know, when they made that major cut back in 2011. So, you know, we are on our way down there. We have a few more years to go to get to that point, but that's that's going to be the continual trend.
Amy?
Yes.
Not all that state aid is, you know, we, some of that is earmarked for certain things, though, right?
No, this is our, well, this is our general state aid.
This is our general state aid.
It doesn't include extraordinary aid or any grants or anything. It's our general state aid. Some of it, I mean, I don't know if you mean some of its category. I mean, we do get categories of state aid, but the the general state aid can be used to just to support your your budget in general. Going back to the capital and maintenance reserves to recap where we are with that. So we had balances at the end of the June 30th, 2020 year, which were 2.3 million in capital and a little over a million dollars in maintenance. So during the 2021 year, we but through our budget, we budgeted to use 667,000 in our capital reserve to support projects during this current year and 250,000 out of our maintenance reserve to support our facilities budget for this current year. So that represents withdrawals. At this point, it's tentative, but we are budgeting to use in our 2122 budget 1.2 million dollars in capital reserve, almost 1.3 and $800,000 out of our maintenance reserve to support our facilities budget. So if this is the way it stands, our remaining balances in our capital budget would be 394,000 and about $10,000 left in the maintenance reserve. So that that total at the bottom, I'm just saying that that's a typo. So that's that needs to get updated, but those the 394, the $10,000 are what be is what would be left. So it's well below the note on the bottom are the allowable balances that we would be able to have in reserves. As you can see, we are well within those limits. So there's no So we have some of the significant components by budget area laid out here and when we get into some of the financial numbers, we did include some of the enrollment numbers that we have right now as of February 15th. Information that we have. So we this these charts include for the, this one's for the elementary schools, our projected enrollment for 2021 and our actual enrollment as of October 15th. That was when we took our state aid application snapshots. And then we have to the left of that, our projected enrollment and our current enrollment as of February 15th. So taking a look at these numbers, you can see our total projected enrollment for this year for the elementaries was 3427. Our current enrollment is 3612. The 3612 compared to what it was in October, 3628. You can see it's remained pretty steady since our October snapshot. We do have registration continuing to go on. So these numbers are by no means we had, as you can see the note down here, kindergarten pre-registration and enrollment history. We had, as of last January, we have 546 students pre-registered for the 2021 school year. And the June 30th, we had 559 students pre-registered and 53 pending. So on October 15th, we actually had 550 students enrolled. So you can see that our actual enrolled were a little less than what we had pre-registered at that time. But we're continuing to monitor this and we don't know, you know, what the fluctuation may be. If you take a look at the next page, we have our projections for middle school and high school. So same thing, we have our projected enrollment, our current enrollment, and then what was projected for our current year and then the actual enrollment for the current year. So you can see at the middle school level, it's pretty consistent. At the high school level, we have a current enrollment that's slightly less than what was projected. And a couple of students less than what it was on October 15th. So but not not significantly different. So again, we're continuing to monitor those. So the reason we look at enrollments is because that will drive, you know, that will help us assess our staffing needs. And if we need to make any changes in our staffing for classes, additional sections, less sections, class sizes. You know, this is all the information that we use to make those determinations. So the next slide, no, go back. I'm sorry, Chris. So the next slide talks about the the dollars related to our personnel, which is our salaries and benefits. So for 2021, we had salaries budgeted of a little over $104 million. For next year, we have salaries budgeted at about 105,582 of a chain representing a change of $1.5 million and about a 1.5% increase. Our average bargaining unit raises are about 3% with the bargaining units that we have contracts for next year. There has been some reallocation of our salary substitute cost to purchase services, which is why, you know, some of the increase that you would expect to see is not here in salaries. It would be more in purchase services. We are factoring in some breakage. We've had an acceleration of retirements and we expect to see more before the end of the year. We are not currently reflecting any staffing changes at this point. But again, that this is all tentative. We haven't been able to make those final decisions yet. In the area of employee benefits, which includes not only our health insurance, but pension, workers' comp, social security, we are projecting a significant increase here at this point. The increase from 25 million to 29 million, 500,000, little over $4 million increase here, which equates to about 16.4%. We are including in here preliminary health insurance premium increase of 10%, which equates to about $2.5 million. We also are factoring in a reduction of anticipated employee contributions of about $1.5 million. These, the contributions are projected to drop because of the implementation of the Chapter 44 New Jersey Educators Health Plan, where the employee contributions that are required are less than what they were under Chapter 78. So we will be realizing less contributions from the employees, which will raise our cost. This is an area that we definitely are monitoring. We don't have final numbers on this at this point in time. Our insurance coverage is in the process of being marketed, analyzed, looked at for different funding options. We have not, you know, completed that process yet. So I really want to stress that these are very preliminary numbers. We are also need to monitor what we think will be the impact next year. We have built in some additional cost for more of our employees migrating to this new employee benefit platform in New Jersey EHP. But we won't, you know, we don't really know what that number is going to be, but we have, we have to build in some additional costs because we already had about 350 employees migrate over just for the current year. And we expect to have more for the July 1st open enrollment. Unfortunately, we won't have that exact number before we do the budget. So again, we're going to have to take our our best estimates on what the impact will be and then continue to work on, you know, what our how we're seeing our coverage for next year and what those actual costs will be. I do know that our broker is meeting with our current carrier Horizon tomorrow. And hopefully, we'll get some feedback from that, but we're also, you know, looking at a variety of other options as well. So that being said, our total salaries and benefits for next year is we're projecting to increase about $5.7 million. Our general fund budget, taking those numbers and then doing a ratio between our salaries and benefits and our total general fund budget. The salaries and benefits have ticked up about one percentage point compared to our total general fund budget. And it's really because of the driving force of the health benefits costing us more, and a lot of it is due to this new platform that the state has implemented for us. There's a couple other areas where we want to highlight in the area of curriculum. We have a couple of new adoptions. We have other ones that are smaller, but these are the major ones. We have a health and phys ed at the high school and middle school level for this year and also an adoption of US history and world history and economics at the high school level. So both of those together represent a cost of a little over half a million dollars. And there are some other things that we've been looking at for next year in curriculum. We do have a curriculum adoption in social studies that has, we have discussed, we're actually make we're looking at possibly trying to find a way to fund that in our current budget because it would be good to get the materials that we need this year instead of waiting till the summertime to order that. And we're also looking, you know, we've had discussions in the last week as we've put together our curricular technology budget, which we had items in there such as Chromebooks and interactive flat panels and desktop replacements in the classrooms. That those items, you know, we're being told are now have very long lead time. So we are trying to find a way to incorporate that, or at least, you know, a good portion of those purchases in our current year budget so that we can get those ordered, because if we wait until later in the spring or the summer, we're not likely going to have those for September. So we are investigating those possibilities. That's why we don't have those things listed here. If we, you know, do not choose to go that way, we will have to incorporate them into next year's budget. But right now, we're hoping with some of the savings that we're seeing on, you know, in some of the areas for this year, that we can really get a jump start on that so that that we can have all those things ready to go for September because we don't want to wait and then not have it already. So we'll give you continuing information on that, but that's our thought process right now. The next slide shows capital outlay. This, these projects are what would be funded out of capital reserve. So there's a list of things. The most significant thing is the first item. We are looking to do a refurbishing of the bubbles. I guess the official name of them is tensile structures, but we call them bubbles. And looking to redo the floors at both high schools bubbles and also the the cut, you know, the the coverings, the skins, they call it, because they are nearing the end of their useful life. The floors are not in great shape and neither are the skins. So we have a preliminary budget number in there right now. We're working with our architect to come image, to come up with a solid approach. to come up with a solid approach, but we have incorporated funds in here for that at this point. And we have some smaller projects. Really, they are mainly focused in the area of safety and necessary maintenance. We need, we need new fire alarm head units at the elementary schools. We have some floor replacements and asbestos abatements in here. We want to replace some of the APR wall tile in River Plaza and Navisay, not some of it, all of it. But we are looking to do this item, the generator hookups. We were looking to do generator hookups at the schools to keep, at Bay Shore and High School South. It says also for the network because when our power goes down, then our network goes down. And if we could have a generator there, that could keep us functional and operational when there's a power outage. And we're also looking to do it at the elementary schools for the heating and alarm circuits so that we can keep those systems going when we have a power outage as well. We are also looking to, you know, with some of the available funds that we have with facilities this year, we were looking to purchase, you know, the generator to, you know, to go with these hookups. But, you know, we'll, so hopefully we'll get that during the current year and then do the hookups over the summer. We're also looking to replace the alarm panel at Thompson. We actually had the alarm panel for Thorn in here as well, but that one became something that had to be done this year. There, there was some issues with it in the last couple of weeks, so we actually have that slated to get done, you know, during our current budget. We're looking to replace the doors in the High School South art wing. We have, we've been doing a system of going to, doing a couple of elementary schools per year and refinishing the stage floor and the fronts and making them look nicer. So we are budgeting to do two of those. We have to look and see which ones need it the most. And then we had some small improvements at New Monmouth, you know, some closet type inserts and some bathroom repairs. But all said and done, you know, that totals the one point two million dollars or one point three million dollars that we are projecting to take out of our capital reserve to fund those projects. So at this point, what's next? We need to continue to focus on our projected personnel insurance cost. That's the biggest driver in our budget. And we are still working on getting more finalized numbers in those areas. So that will, that will have an impact. All areas of the budget will remain under review and subject to change. You know, we are also looking a lot at our special ed budget still because we've had, we have had some increase in some of the costs for this year and it's understandable because of the pandemic. We've been catching up on some things and we need to see how much of that's going to carry over into next year. So we are still working on getting that more finalized. We're also looking, as I mentioned before, to get our state aid allocations hopefully next week so that we have an actual number there. We must have our tentative budget for twenty-one, twenty-two approved by the board and submitted to the county superintendent by Monday, March twenty-second. So at this point, we are planning to have that ready for the board's workshop meeting, which will make a special voting meeting on March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day. Or, you know, to then have that ready to submit to the county. And just to refresh everyone's memory, once we submit to the county, the county reviews it. If they approve it, then we can go ahead and introduce it as our final budget and have a public hearing on it between April twenty-fourth and May seventh. I believe our voting meeting falls between those dates. I don't remember which date in April it is, but it's definitely between the twenty-fourth and May seventh, so we can do that at our regularly scheduled voting meeting. We are also permitted to make changes. If we submit a tentative budget, we are permitted to change it before we introduce a final budget. We just have to then relay the changes to the county superintendent and get sign off on that as well. So we're, you know, we hope that gives you an overview of where we are. We're not, you know, we're basically, you know, as we've been discussing all along, focusing as far as projects go on things that, you know, relate primarily to health and safety type items or items that are really in need of repair, like the bubbles. We are, you know, looking to continue to review our staffing and our benefits. And we are, you know, basically not projecting any significant, you know, changes in our operations for next year. We still have a little bit of a gap to close and that gap is changed depending upon some of these other numbers. But we'll, you know, as those numbers come in, you know, we're going to have to pivot and, you know, make adjustments in order to accommodate those changes. So Mrs. Walberg, do you have anything you want to add? I think you've gone a second one. That was good.
So how will we know, how will we know when, is that going to be the next presentation of what has to be adjusted, as you say? Is that how, is that how that's going to be determined? So the next time you present, I guess you're going to say what the gap is and what was changed in order to make up the difference potentially?
I, I think what the, the plan is right now, and, you know, everything's subject to change. But I know we should have more information on our insurance and our state aid before our next facilities and finance committee meeting. We can review a lot of that with that committee and then push that information, you know, out to the board, you know, through our committee structure. We will, we definitely, when we introduce our tentative budget, we, we do a full presentation on it. So anything that's different from here to went to the tentative budget, that will be incorporated in that presentation for the public and before the board would vote on it.
Okay. So when, when, so I guess personnel decisions will be in there. The, the rehire meeting is what, what date is that?
It's in May.
Right, isn't until May after the budget's finalized.
After, after the budget's finalized.
Yes.
To your point, Mr. Little, we are on track to have the, all of our middle school and high school course selection meetings with counselors and students wrapped up within the next couple of weeks. That will definitely give us a more fine-tuned projection of student enrollment at that level. And we'll be further along in it with our kindergarten pre-registration at that point in time as well. And we are receiving already pre-registrations for next year grades one through five. So all of that will start to crystallize and will be incorporated into those very preliminary projections that Mrs. Doherty shared earlier. So we will, by the time we talk about the tentative budget in mid-March, we definitely will have more staffing information available.
Mrs. Doherty, unless I missed it, I don't see this presentation in the portal. Will this be put in the portal?
It will actually be posted on the website for the public and everybody with the information. We, we have a budget page on the website that will post this with, we may, we probably even post it with the board meeting information and the budget information, but now that'll be, that'll be public. We'll get that up tomorrow morning.
I, I think Deb's point too, in the future, if we're going to get handouts, can we try to get it to the board members that are, are virtual ahead of time so that they could see it as we see it? Is that what you're looking right, Deb?
Yes, Mrs. Minnies, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I think we're going to need that information because I don't, I don't know how we're going to vote on this if it, we're sort of fed information and there's changes. So I guess if we get it in advance, I guess we could ask more, you know, more knowledgeable questions, I guess.
I don't think we're anywhere near ready to vote on anything anyway. This budget isn't put together. There's going to be more presentations and public presentations.
Well, there's my part. I mean, we're, again, we're definitely planning on doing a full presentation at the workshop meeting in March. We, you know, we are, you know, waiting for some significant information, you know, that goes into the budget to finalize the numbers that we highlighted.
Maybe we're going to have some more insurance information, I'm assuming by March or?
I'm hoping to hear something, you know, within the next week or so. It'd definitely be before our next finance and facilities meeting.
The biggest expenditure we ever.
Are we going to have regular just budget meetings, not the next workshop meeting? We're going to have budget meetings a week besides?
I don't, I don't think we, anyway.
Because you know, you have, like last year, you had some presentations for the public as.
Right, well, we did, we did some, we did some separate budget meetings last year because we only had the one board meeting every month. So, you know, we've been using these workshop meetings to incorporate the budget presentations, but, you know, I mean.
Okay. This is the second one, right? This is our second.
This is right, we did one in January.
Amy, Amy, I, I don't know. I think, I think there was a time when we still had two workshop, we had a workshop and a voting meeting. We still had separate budget meetings because those budget meetings were in, in, I guess, executive session, whatever, since I've been here, and then we changed it to public. So that's not true statement, right? They were separate, but there were separate budget meetings, even when we had, even when we had the, the two meetings, workshop.
I disagree with you, John. They were never in closed session. There were personnel ones in closed session, but all budget meetings were done in public.
What, what?
Maybe you forgot about that.
No, the first year I was here, we had meetings that were not in public about the budget.
We had personnel meetings that were not in public because you can't discuss personnel in public. But the rest of the budget information was done in public.
That, that's only been the last couple of years. I, I guess, I, I just, I remember being in room in, in that central office there the first year I was here, and there wasn't a public meeting. And we were talking about budget. Last couple of years, we met in public.
For personnel, you were private. I disagree with you, but go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. So, so like, so what I'm saying is that there's, there's always been, since I've been here, I guess, it's been, you know, separate meetings. If we're not going to do that, that's fine. Just, you know, it just, I guess you're saying that the next workshop, the next two workshops is when you're going to make the presentations, then that's the, that's the path?
Yeah, you know. What we had planned to do was at the, the March seventeenth workshop is present the final budget and then that will be.
Tentative budget.
Or the tenant, I'm sorry, the tentative budget, the final tentative budget. And that would be the day of the vote, but we, you know, that was just something that we had, you know.
So when is, when is the board going to get together and be able to tell you what our thoughts are after you put this all together? I mean, that was a closed-door meeting a few years back where we actually heard all the information, the public heard it, and then the board got together and gave their input. It doesn't seem like we're going to have any input. We're going to go right to the March seventeenth meeting and we either vote yes or no.
Well, I mean, this, that's up to the board.
You can, you can have another meeting, you know, it's up to you.
We've just, we've been scheduling these budget updates as part of the workshop meeting because we now have workshop meetings. But there's another meeting that the board wants to have. That's up to the board.
I would suggest in your committee meetings, everybody, that you start emphasizing what your concerns are with the budget that's presented in your specific committee, and let's get your input in there because that might be the only chance you have.
I, I think that's going to be hard though, right, Joan? Because, you know, there's going to be things that are going to offset each other, right? There might be something that's talked about in one committee that's sacrificed for something else in another committee. For example, there might be something, technology that may not be as important as, you know, keeping, you know, three teachers employed. So I, I don't know how that committee structure is going to work other than making suggestions and then someone's going to have to make up that difference that if we're still left with the difference at the end of the day. So I don't know how the committees are going to be able to do that.
That goes back to what you considered as private meetings.
Well, you just said, you just said we had closed meetings, right?
It was, I said we had a personnel meeting. But years back, there was committee of the whole board meetings to, for the board to discuss their concerns on what they wanted to see in the budget.
Right, which were closed to the public.
Many, many years.
Right, which were closed to the public.
The, the one, oh, yes, the one meeting of the board of the whole where the board could give their input.
Right, that's what I was, that's what I was referring, that's what I was referring to, right?
But you were, yeah, then.
First year I was here, we did that. I could, I could tell you that. So the, but it doesn't really matter to me either way, whether it's public, probably, I don't see why it wouldn't be. But, yeah, I'm just asking what the, what the flight path is because, you know, if we're going to vote on it, as you mentioned, I, I don't know how we make decisions about what's being changed, you know, other than things like insurance, which may or may not be in our control. This might become down to certain things we have to make decisions on about, I think, you know, prior years, personnel, class sizes, things like that.
Well, that's just it, John. You can't discuss personnel in public.
Well.
So if you want to discuss personnel, you have to have a personnel of the whole committee. Anything else, we could sit here and, and give our opinion on what we want to see. But if you want to discuss personnel, that has to be a closed door.
No, I, I, I guess maybe I should clarify. Well, the numbers we would speak, we talk about in public were overall headcount, right? They would say, here's what the headcount was, here's the reduction in headcount to make, to reach the budget. We wouldn't speak about individuals or anything of that nature. But whether it's public or not, I, I guess I just want to make sure we're going to do it through the, the workshops. And that's the way we're going to do this. That's all I want to know.
Well, I guess it's going through committees first because that's how it has been.
Yeah, I guess that was.
The last three years, that's how it's been.
Right, I guess that was our understanding that in working with the committees, that, you know, the committees would then be.
But, no, but hold it, hold it, hold it. The committees did do that, but we also had separate budget meetings. I, I don't know, I don't understand my indifferent aboard. I, I don't, we had, we had budget meetings last year, right?
But we are having, we are having, I did, I'm saying.
To have these workshop meetings, and that's what we've been using these workshop meetings to do these budget meetings.
Okay, so, so we're saying is that this is going to be our budget meeting and then the committees will do their pieces. And then at the end, I, I guess if there's any sort of overlap, I guess we'll have to figure out how that's going to be addressed?
Yeah, I mean, I would think that the input from all the committees that's captured in the budget that's presented, that presented as a tentative budget, that would all be part of the presentation as well.
Okay.
And we have standing committees in individual areas, so that's what we thought. I mean, that was our understanding, but the board thing, I mean, obviously, whatever meetings that you want to have.
I want to bring up something that, I just want to bring up something. I know this is not a priority because we have other things with this budget. And while it's not a priority, I know we have other things with this budget that we have to think of. But co-curricular does not meet. And when we did meet, we had two things. We had the bubble, which was very important. But Mr. Carroll made a big deal of telling us, explaining to us about this field. We don't have anything about the field addressed yet. I'm not saying that I want it. I just want to know that you're thinking about it because if the field is that bad, bad, fast, are we going to be able to do next year?
You mean a turf field?
Well, no, they said the field was, everybody told me it was terrible, terrible.
There's a drain issue in the trap.
That, that would be a capital project. And that would be something that we typically, when we do those types of projects, that we fund out of our capital reserve.
Okay, I just want to, I don't see anything here. And I, okay, I won't, I just want to.
Thing to do it for.
I think we were, yeah, budget, budget for this year, I think, is what.
Right.
Feedback.
But, you know, if we can build, you know, hopefully, I mean, our plan is to be able to, you know, have saved money, which is what we've been doing over the past several years, save money out of our current budget that we can replenish our capital reserve each year, and then we end up taking it out for those types of projects.
Okay, I just, I want to bring it up because there's no, we're not meeting.
It's on our radar.
It's on your radar? That's all I'm wondering.
Definitely on our radar.
I mean, Amy, the trap is still on the warranty, so we're looking into that.
Yes.
Oh, we go, yes, what's happening with the trap? We have you, as far as, has anybody called? Has anybody spoken to them?
Well, I know they, I mean, they did some, like, the company came out and did maintenance work, you know, I think last fall. You know, I think that they were going to try to see if there's anything more need to be done for the string.
Only because, it's on, I, listen, trap doesn't look fantastic, but it's on our warranty. And if we could get it replaced or covered under the warranty to buy.
There's, they, they have not said, you know, they're not going to replace it. They do the repairs and they, and they do maintenance on to approved condition. This is the last year that won't take. We get a five point take. The track will be five.
Whatever we can save because we need it as much as we can because with everything else that you're losing money, we, we need to work it again.
Yeah, Leonora, the, you know, the idea of repairing the fields, improving the fields really would fall under the jurisdiction of the facilities committee, would it not?
First, it goes to co-curricular and it does go to facilities. It goes to both.
Right, and, and Amy, and Amy, if I can ask, if you're looking for input from various committees, are you expecting those committees to quantify their budget request? Or are they, or are you simply looking for ideas from these committees which don't have a dollar value?
I mean, what, what has been happening in committee is, you know, that the administrators who are the liaisons to these committees have been reviewing the items that were recommended for inclusion in the next year's budget. We, we usually are the ones who are able to get budget estimates on these items. We, we usually are the ones who are able to get budget estimates on these items. You know, we wouldn't expect board members to be doing that.
Right, yes, I, I understand that, but it seems to me that if that's the direction we're gonna go in, you might be time challenged to get proposals from, from vendors or contractors, no?
Well, that, I mean, we've been working on the things that we've been discussing since the fall. I mean, we, you know, we started this process in, you know, September, October. So, particularly the things that you saw listed, you know, under projects, you know, under facilities, that's something that's been accumulated over, right, several months.
I understand that, but I understand Mrs. Minuess tonight, our charge in terms of being a member of a committee is to report back to, I assume, you uh, with certain plans or projects that we'd like to see included in the budget, correct?
No, that wasn't what I said.
Yeah, I mean, that happens through the committee process and there's different administrators who are liaisons to these committees that maybe work as a team. So, you know, for example, on the co-curricular, um, committee, you know, Mr. Carroll was involved. I think Mr. Rendella attended, Mr. Patrick.
This was not my suggestion. This was the suggestion from Carol. Like, I, I want talk to realize it wasn't my suggestion.
Oh, I understand that, but it seems to me that, it seems to me that, again, the jurisdiction of the baseball field, the football field, any, any playing field would come under, under facility, the facilities committee and not co-curricular.
Right, and we do talk about it in the facilities as well.
Right.
My suggestion to the board is, Mr. Little was asking questions about budget. My suggestion to my committee members is when you're going into your committee and, and you're discussing what's in the budget, if you have suggestions or questions about what you feel is your priority, you can suggest them in your committees. So that your, your say is heard. Otherwise, nobody's gonna hear what you're saying. So if you have a concern and you have a priority, say, hey, this has been going on for two years, have we considered that? That's what you should do in your committees. So that your priorities are heard. It doesn't mean they're gonna get incorporated, but you need to be able to have a say. Some of you have been on committees for years, some of you are brand new. You know, there's a lot of questions out there, there's a lot of ideas, there's a lot of things that might have been overlooked. It doesn't hurt for you guys to put your opinions in there. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying you're running the roost. I'm saying you should be able to ask your questions and your suggestions should be heard. It doesn't mean it's gonna get done that way. But at least you were able to say, you had to say, you asked about it, you asked why it was being done this way, why it was being done that way. Get into the conversation. And if you're not in the committees, read the reports like we were all told to do for the last couple of years. And some of us, that's all that we knew what was in the reports and then come to our workshop meetings and ask those questions. That's what these, these workshop meetings, that's what these budget presentations are about. And if you're still not happy, then you have the option to vote no for the budget. But this is your opportunity to ask your questions and get them out there and understand it better. That's all I'm saying.
Amy, quick question. What's your numbers you have for the projects you wanna do this year? Are those numbers that from like uh, proposals we've gotten from contractors? Is that how we gain those numbers?
I didn't hear the first part of your question.
We had proposal numbers for the projects we're trying to accomplish this year.
Yes, those are things that, you know, the facilities department and, you know, gets actual proposals from business.
We are working on business, so.
Right, right, anything that's over the bid threshold, we would have to go out to bid, uh, before anything is awarded. But we have to get budget estimates in order to just plan.
Okay.
Sometimes if it's a large enough, large enough project, we'll get a budget estimate from our architect just to plan for it. And then we put together the bid and we, you know, go out to bid. Is that it? That's what we have at this time, you know, again, you know, as we said, we're gonna continue to work through it as an administrative team and through our committee process. You know, and continue to refine the budget till we get to a final landing place, at least for our tentative budget.
By the next meeting, should we have the state aid?
Well, we should have our state aid by, I'm hoping next week unless it posts on it. And, you know, that's something that we always let the board know right away, you know, what that number is through an email. So you would know, the whole board would know. You know, oh my gosh, it's so much less than we thought. There, I mean, that, that. I know, I'm pessimist, but.
Now maybe us too have got away.
That's like con off the press information that we, we give to the board right away.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
And any major changes in the insurance, you know, we would also let the board know that right away.
Very hot topic.
Yeah.
Going up so much money, estimated sixteen point four percent. Really need to know which way we, which direction we're gonna go on that.
All right, Mrs. Walker, did you wanna update anything?
Yes, I did. I wanted to do an update first on our reopening plan. I mean, as everyone knows, since, uh, October, we've been gradually adding students to our classrooms. I mean, October, we had, gave the opportunity to our special class program students to attend five days a week, so that increased the size. Uh, the next phase was to, um, that same opportunity to other students without E P S and students at risk. So they began attending five days. Um, after that was the opportunity for our students that had been fully virtual to enter into the cohort model. So that increased the number of students in our classroom. And that last phase was, uh, finished up in the beginning of January. Um, so last week, we moved ahead with our special class programs again and we lengthened the day. They're in a full day for their five days in special class programs. Um, and that's going wonderful. Um, this gives them extra opportunity, uh, you know, for, for their, you know, education, but also for related services. Um, and some socialization during lunch, which is very important for them. So, um, that was something that, uh, you know, we wanted to, to get done and that's been successful. Uh, this week, we, um, we were able to bring, uh, actually combine the cohorts in the kindergarten and first grades. Um, so all students have the opportunity in K and one to participate five days and most students are. Um, teachers were thrilled to see all their students sitting in front of them and the students were very happy to be in class with almost all of their classmates. Um, that process is going to continue, um, as far as, you know, the number, the health data has been very good. So we will continue with that process and bring in our second and third graders in about a little less than a week and a half. Uh, followed by our, uh, uh, fourth and fifth graders. Um, at the middle school level, um, we weren't able to combine the cohorts yet at this time. But we, uh, came up with a schedule that adds, uh, basically a, a third or fourth day to each week um, of their schedule. So they have more in-person days, which also increases the number of students in, in classrooms. Um, so we're, we're up to about sixty-one percent, um, of students participating in person on any given day, which is just an additional, and now students in the classroom. And at the high school, we were able to combine the cohorts and, and, and the middle schools are gonna start on, uh, they're gonna start on Monday. Oh, sorry. That's okay. The middle schools are going to start on, um, they're gonna start on, on Monday. Um, that was a plan that we had actually just developed, um, la- early last week when we were meeting with P R T teams right before then. And we just, you know, threw it out there to see if it would work and, and we actually believe that it's gonna work really well. Um, with not a lot of disruption to the students. They're going to be going their same days with an extra day, um, added in. So, you know, that, that worked out. We're hoping it's gonna work out well. And at the high school levels, on Monday, we, uh, we were able to combine the cohorts. And the reason we could do that is because the in-person attendance, the participation of in-person was extremely low. So by combining the cohorts, we're still only at about fifty percent of our total population, which was the expected percentage of students in school in the cohort level. So, um, you know, if you walk through the high schools now, there's lots of students in there. I mean, if you went a couple of weeks ago, you might see three or four students in a class. That has greatly increased. Um, I think students are enjoying it. The teachers are enjoying teaching with more students in front of them, you know, more class participation. Um, it, it's just a better scenario. And we are going to continue moving in that direction as long as the health data keeps improving and it has significantly improved. Um, we do ask our community to help us, long note, because as we increase the class sizes, our social distancing, um, mountain, we can social distance in the class actually decreases. So it's, it's more important than ever for, you know, students who aren't feeling well to stay home. Um, for our community members to, to try to follow the protocols that help keep, um, the spread of the virus down so it's not brought in the schools, like, uh, wearing masks when you're in public and, um, avoiding gatherings, parties, things like that. Those are the type of things that can start the spread, which brings it into the school and causes us to have to pivot to virtual. And that is the last thing we wanna do. We're just getting our students back five days. And the last thing we wanna do is put them into a virtual situation for fourteen days. So we just ask everybody to keep on doing, you know, what they're doing. Our numbers have gone down dramatically even in school, so that's, uh, that's really a good sign. Uh, and that just brings me into attendance procedures. We put out attendance procedures earlier this week. And the purpose is just to provide some consistency of who's in the classroom every day. It's to prevent students from doing a day-to-day, I think I'll go today, I don't think I'll go tomorrow, just so that everybody follows their schedule. We want students in and we want them in on their day. Now, that doesn't mean if they're sick or if they have to quarantine or if there's some other reason, that they should feel compelled to have to go into school. That's not the case. Just call school, let them know what's going on and, you know, that, that won't be a problem. It's the students that are deciding on certain days to come and other days not to come. Those are the students that will end up being pivoted to virtual. Um, after so many, you know, there, there'll be lots of discussions with the student and parent before that happens. So I, I don't want anyone to panic and think, you know, that, oh, if my child's absent three days, they're gonna be automatically, you know, pivoted to virtual instruction and I have to get a doctor's note. That's not the case. It, it's just to get some kind of consistency in the classroom. Um, the last thing I wanna talk about is our school calendar. Um, we started developing the school calendar and, and most of the days, um, the days off are, are rather set, our Christmas break, our, our, um, our, you know, our, our spring break, the, the holidays, you know, President's Day, Memorial Day. They're, they're set holidays. There's not a lot of decisions to make there. The decisions, um, that we have to make basically revolve around when to start school in September and that week in, uh, November where we have teachers convention and election day. So we put out a survey to gauge how our community feels about that. That survey is now active on the parent portal, so we encourage everybody to go in. Uh, look at the, you know, at the survey, give us your opinion. And, uh, we will take that into consideration when we create the calendar, calendar, which we hope to have on the agenda for the voting meeting on Tuesday. The, the, the survey is open and it should close, uh, it will close on Sunday evening. And the only other thing is, if you haven't already heard, tomorrow will be a virtual day due to the snowstorm. We've had a lot of snow this year and, uh, hopefully this is our last hurrah. I don't know about you, but I'm pretty much done with the snow.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thank you so much. I'm glad you clarified the attendance policy because we are getting some emails about that and as long as people know that they can contact their school and, and tell the situation, whether it's a family event or whatever, that you know, the kids are not gonna be penalized for that.
That's it. It, the, 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 the intent is to keep people from coming in and out and in and out just because they, you know, didn't wanna go to school that day. They wanted to go virtual. If you can, go into school and, you know, on your scheduled day. If you can, call the school and let them know why.
All right, thank you. Okay, next we have technology with Mike Darling and Dave Souyak.
Mr. Souyak is gonna give the report, Joan.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Good evening. Um, our technology committee met on, uh, February tenth and we discussed a number of items. Um, so I'll go through a summary of some of the items we discussed. The first one being our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tech, technology budget, our tentative budget. Um, the main components of the proposed budget are, are big ticket items are, uh, replacement interactive flat panels, um, Chromebooks to keep our, our one-on-one initiative moving along and desktops that are, that have aged and become well past end of life. Um, we just, we discussed some reasoning for the, uh, for these particular components and, and, and the need for it this time. Um, and the proposed budget includes about a hundred, approximately a hundred seventy-four, uh, interactive flat panels for classrooms across the district. Uh, just shy of two thousand Chromebooks, um, and four hundred desktop replacements for, uh, across the district. Uh, we discussed our E-rate twenty twenty-two. Um, you know, we discussed over the last few years, we've accomplished in district, a lot of our large-scale infrastructure projects, um, with using E-rate funds, uh, which is a positive. And that's why we don't have any big, large infrastructure projects on this year's budget or in E-rate. Um, we did post a Form four seventy, uh, for thirteen, uh, uninterrupted power supplies in certain data closets across this district and for both of our internet connections, which, uh, contracts come up in July first. Um, we will be using the N J D R L A P, um, contract, which is a part of the uh, Education Service Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Contract. Um, and that will allow us to provide additional bandwidth for both of our connections. Um, and it'll also allow us, uh, to realize the cost savings on both of those connections as well. Um, we discussed the hybrid text, hybrid instruction as a, as a potential technology. Um, we discussed some issues as students and staff are having at home, you know, connections issues, Google meets. Um, I explained to the committee that we now have resources where we have the ability to remote in the technology staff and the assist, uh, parents and students in resolving those issues at home. Um, in many cases, if the issue is with their provider, we'll assist with that as well. Um, we also discussed best practices that have been provided to teachers to help prevent, um, inappropriate student online, um, behavior. Um, and we just also discussed, um, additional tools that a technology administrative staff now has where we're allowed to, where we can create a more individualized or personalized online experience for students. Um, that makes their lives a little easier when they're remote. Um, one of the items that we just, we added to as well was, uh, as application usage. Um, we kinda discussed how we're constantly vetting applications that are being purchased and used by the staff and students. Um, one particular application, Screencastify is new to the district. It was purchased last June. Um, and it was purchased with the intent that, that when we were gonna go personal, hybrid or virtual, we'd need some type of utility like this. And basically Screencastify, um, is allows staff to create videos, personalized videos and, and instructional videos for their students. Um, I shared some statistics on its usage and, uh, in January of this year, uh, the district created over thirty-three hundred videos, which is pretty significant. And since the school year started, our staff has created almost twenty-two thousand videos that they've used. Um, and the reason this came up was because we were actually notified by Screencastify of our outstanding use of the product. Um, we also discussed another product we have is an application, Dino. Um, and I shared with the committee that, um, the reports show that fifty percent of our teachers are using it on a daily basis in each one of their classes, which is a, is a positive note. Um, some of the current projects in the technology world right now, uh, we have our M T P S student intern, uh, who came to us from our career seminar course in High School South. Um, and the projects he's working on, uh, PC repair, software deployment, uh, we have him doing some website communications, asset management. Um, he works for two hours a day. Uh, it's an unpaid internship as per the course guidelines. Um, and he, he's doing a great job. We're also in the process of building our N J S L A cash servers, all twenty-two of them, uh, in preparation of testing, which is scheduled, I believe, uh, in March and April, or at least which one of the states telling us. Um, we've also been working on our N F H S cameras and servers. Uh, we've been having difficulties with the streaming of athletics and we're trying to work with the vendor in replacing some of that equipment and getting up to speed. Um, in the meantime, we're in the process of building video streaming kits that we can use in lieu of those, uh, the, in lieu of those, uh, devices. Um, and also in our middle school athletic events. Uh, and finally, Mrs. Morales, uh, was at our meeting and she, um, wanted to add about the M T P S library website that our media specialists are, are adding to our virtual library since spring. Um, this, our site, uh, provides the staff and students access to eBooks, um, audiobooks, challenges and more. Um, since the spring, since last spring, M T P S, uh, has increased their partnership with the public library. Um, the public library now offers all of our student digital access cards, regardless of fines around, which is something different from the past. Um, and we are constantly communication with the library. Um, and I wanna formally thank them for their opportunities of providing our students in a future board meeting.
Yep.
Um, our next meeting, uh, is scheduled for April fourteenth, uh, at six P M. It's also be via Google.
Thank you, Dave. It's great to see that our participation and cooperation with the library is growing because they have a lot to offer. because they have a lot to offer. And and I just have one question. The new um Chromebooks, where are they being um used? Is that for replenishments or?
Those are replenishment. At the current time, we have nearly, because we went uh because of uh the governor's order in spring, we had to go one-to-one pre-K through twelve. Prior to that, we're one-to-one through the twelve. So we have between staff and students nearly eleven thousand Chromebooks in circulation at the current time. So what we do is to 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 put an ease on a budget, we try to replenish uh well, fifth of it because and end of life is five years on these Chromebooks. So these that we purchasing will be just deployed in ninth grade and then in the elementaries as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions? All right, thank you, guys. Uh Student Services, Deb and Mrs. Tiedemann.
Yes, thank you. And Dr. Tiedemann, feel free to jump in if I miss anything or if I confuse.
Sure, absolutely.
What we talked about. Um we had a really great uh monthly meeting last week, uh last Thursday night on February eleventh. Uh one of the first things that we went over was uh last Monday, February eighth, our special class programs returned to the regular school day. So we were able to get a little bit of an update about how that went and the numbers of students that participated in that. We were happy to hear that it went well and just like uh Mrs. Walker was talking about earlier, it sounded like all the classrooms, all the teachers were very happy about having the students back. Um and I think there may have been some issues or small issues around transportation that were all then settled, I think, by the time that we had met um on last Thursday. So we were happy to hear that that is going smoothly for all the students. Um the next thing that we covered is uh the grant that we received from NJ NJ CIE and NJ IETA. We've been reporting on this for several months now. And this was actually the two grants that we received uh to basically help our district move towards more inclusion um of our special ed students in the general ed setting classrooms. And really what we've been hearing um for the past couple of months is that even though this total project range is between three to five years, the first year is really for us both with the Leonardo uh school program that we picked and also the pre-K program at Harmony that we picked is for really those teams to go through a self-assessment of where we are right now within the district. This month's meeting, we were able to hear a little bit more about sort of how they're rating themselves. Um and all of these meetings are facilitated by NJ CIE. I don't want to go into too many specifics about sort of what we heard because what we are planning to do is have a presentation for the public actually on this in April. Um that is actually our target time for the workshop meeting to start going over sort of where we are with this, but it does sound actually like it's moving along well. Um and as we had discussed at last month's meeting and also with our CPAG meeting with MTF ODL, we do want to start having some parent participation. I think that is probably going to happen more when both of the committees get towards the action planning stage uh of this, you know, first year of going through this grant, which I think, Dr. Tiedemann, I think you did say that maybe possible by spring or summer, I think is what you said.
We we are hoping for the end of this school year to be able to bring on parent participants and move into the action planning phase.
So that seems to be going uh very well, continued to go well. The next thing that we covered um as we sort of again move through the school year is further reports on what happened with the disproportionality uh citation that we did receive last year. And that again was for the school years encompassing twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Again, just to sort of remind everybody, uh we had to use, I think it was fifteen percent of our IDA funds towards addressing the disproportionality. I think a lot of work has already been started by Dr. Young in terms of looking at the data of really of those school years and sort of what was going on. Um and the next thing that I believe actually will be on the agenda next week is that uh again, we discussed this in uh past couple of meetings is we also want to bring on a consultant to really look at this data and sort of help I think the school district try and figure out sort of not only what happened, but how this could be addressed better going forward. So we don't have any further issues. We did put out an RFP and I believe, I think there was only one that we received, one answer.
Yes, only one RFP.
Okay, and that will be on the voting agenda for next week. Uh we talked about some proposed dates for ESY for the summer. Um Dr. Tiedemann, I don't know if you want to talk about that at all.
Yes, we are proposing, will be on the agenda hopefully for voting next week. Uh July sixth through August sixth, Monday through Friday, eight thirty to twelve thirty.
And Mrs. Tiedemann, that's a different, that's different from past years, right? Because we went Monday to Thursday?
Yeah, so previously it been uh still twenty-four days, but Monday through Thursday for an extra week. This would be five days a week, still twenty-four days, but it would allow the schools that are going to host, which will be just as last year. Harmony for elementary, Thon for middle and secondary. If we wrap it up by August sixth, it gives them a little more time to prepare their buildings.
Okay. Uh we had our CPAG meeting um with MTF ODL, actually the day before that we met. So the CPAG meeting was on February tenth. Um I have to say it was another really great meeting. You know, at the top of the agenda, I think, you know, we had some concerns that were raised by some of the parents again around the transportation, small transportation issues, I think we had last week at the start of all the special classrooms going into the regular school day, which then were quickly resolved. And then we were able to really do a further deep dive into dyslexia and all of the screening assessments and sort of honestly, what happens uh throughout the entire process. Uh once we have a student that is identified as dyslexic and then sort of what, you know, can happen from there. This was a continued discussion from a prior meeting that we had, um where, you know, we had such a great discussion, I think so many questions um that needed to be answered. We actually couldn't finish it in one meeting, so we finished it for this meeting, which I think was really informative. You know, me as a board member, myself as a parent of a child who's been identified as dyslexic and then also for the representatives from MTF ODL to be able to get more answers to the questions I think that they have been fielding uh from parents at their monthly meetings. So I did think that was really uh a really good part of the meeting. We also, again, you know, tried to talk about compensatory services um during this time due to COVID and uh you know, we're still waiting for guidance from NJ DOE on that. You know, I think Dr. Tiedemann did a good job in updating at least uh with some of the services where you know, I think the administration is sort of moving forward at this point on their own, trying to make up some services that they know have been missed. But overall, still waiting for that further guidance. And then there was uh some talk of an inclusion presentation to be planned and co-hosted both by MTF LDL and then also the administration, um hopefully for some time in the spring. So there'll be some further updates on that. And then to round out uh our meeting, we had just asked for just basically an update sort of what's been going on with the counseling and the guidance department, especially in this past year. You know, with everything due to COVID and the virtual learning and sort of the switching back and forth. Again, not to, you know, try and talk about particular issues, which we know we cannot, but overall, just sort of what the utilization has been um for the departments themselves. If there have been any kind of significant increases over some, you know, what is considered normal in a regular school year. We talked more about all of the uh resources that have been listed on the district website. Hopefully, you know, parents, if you have not known about that, to please go and look at the website. It's actually pretty significant in terms of the resources that are listed there. Things that are being used, obviously, within the classroom for students. And then also uh talking about the virtual calming room that's available, you know, uh for students as well. And I actually did check it out, Dr. Tiedemann afterwards, and I was pretty impressed myself. So overall, I think it was a really great meeting. And so thank you again.
Thank you. Yes, and I do highly recommend a virtual calming room. It is, it's very calming. If you just quick click on the link, it's music, it's vision. If you're having a stressful day, it's worth checking out.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. It was a great meeting, I have to admit. A lot of good information. So thank you for keeping that going. Okay, facilities. Mr. Capone and Mrs. Darty.
Yes, starting.
It's up to you. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh we had about two and a half weeks ago, February first. Um I'll start with the facilities. Uh the use of the school facilities, uh we're currently uh uh we're talking to MYAA and uh EYAA are interested in permitting our facilities with best weekly activities. I don't know if you spoke to them anymore or?
Actually, MYAA did start
Okay.
Use of facilities this past weekend. We haven't done anything further than EYAA.
Right, so you spoke with them and uh the parameters of usage were merely NJ NJ SIAA, obviously. We'll provide these groups with course assessment, obviously, you made an agreement with them. And uh custodial coverage, the security to make sure that COVID protocols are implemented.
It is. And actually, an update to that is, I guess, now that the uh the governor is allowing spectators and indoor sports, you know, we're working on seeing how that will impact our permiters too.
And by spectators, it's parents only.
Parents.
Parents only.
Yeah, they have to be approved registered to, yeah.
To be, right. All right, then we also have a project for High School South, the HVAC project, uh Spiesel is nearing the completion of the design phase, but they actually sent this out, I believe, February twelfth, correct? That opened up waiting for the.
We, the advertisement, yeah.
Yeah, by the way, and we're gonna be opening up the biz uh March twelfth.
Right.
Our one major concern that the NJ DOE is actually very backlog's.
We're working on that.
And we are working on that, yes, to try and expedite that. And that's something we want to take care of, obviously, before September or the summertime.
Over the summer, right.
Uh staffing vacancies, uh currently there are three full-time custodial and two part-time custodial positions vacant. Uh in addition, interviews will take place, I'm assuming they took place already.
They did. Uh we're gonna be expanding the search, so we're not gonna have a recommendation this month.
Okay. Uh okay, vacant property update, uh we'll get into this, the Port Monmouth Building, uh lot of violations, other vacant parcels, uh I guess we can just skip to. We got all appraisals on most of the vacant land and the properties that we do have. Some of them came in, I think, considerably lower than you would like, but the Port Monmouth Elementary School building and land was estimated at one point five six million dollars. The parking lot across the street, Main and Poplar Street, was three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Kings Highway East and Sleepy Hollow Road Parcel, seven hundred and ten thousand. And State Square Place North of Oak Street was seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh the committee discussed the recent communication I see by District Guard and the proposal subdivision of the parcel and close proximity to the Kings Highway East and Sleepy Hollow Road Parcel. The committee also discussed the need for determining the next step with Port Monmouth Elementary School. Uh capital project, we we actually speak about that before, the capital projects and equipment consideration, we discussed the uh twenty twenty-one capital budget. The mostly again, we were talking about with the bubbles and the skins that we had to replace at North and South. Structures of floors they need are replacing as well. Uh that's what we came up with, seven hundred and forty thousand dollar budget that you showed in the presentation approximately. The district is uh currently getting, it consults with Spiesel to develop the possible approach, these implementations and the budget estimate that you got seven hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, that that's tentative. We're still working on refining.
They also spoke maybe of of new ones, but I think that was something that you're gonna look into.
Yeah, we were looking at some different options.
The capital price and equipment items will be part of the district's budget. We spoke about that. Now we're gonna go on to finance. The twenty twenty-one mid-year budget review with the NJ DOE. Um this Walker, Mrs. Darty, met with the county superintendent to review the status of our current budget and review challenges and approach to the twenty twenty-one budget. The review included certain data, including the New Jersey taxpayer guides to education spending in which middle towns metrics are compared to statewide metric for similar sized districts. All the districts ratios were favorable on the county superintendent noting that middle towns administrative cost per pupil was low, was low. Uh the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget development, Miss Walker, Mrs. Darty updated the committee on the budget development process. Administration is still in the process of refining estimates and making reductions in the order for balanced budgets to be presented. Uh one of the bigger expenses, this healthcare, which is health benefits was up ten percent, which obviously we're gonna speak about that a little bit more in detail in a couple of months. Uh and the number is definitely subject to change. Additional areas of focus include staffing and facilities. And the administration is working on updates of enrollment project projections for next year as well.
Anything else? Our next meeting is March first.
March first, yes.
March first. All right, we're going to policy. Jackie and Mrs. Darty.
Hi, everybody. Um Amy, I'll start and then you can fill in if I miss anything. We had a policy meeting on January twenty-fifth. And we discussed um updating some of the language in the policy sixteen forty-eight, which is our restart and recovery plan. The first update that we recommend recommended was um the references to indoor dining restrictions should be removed. And the related sentences should 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 contain some kind of reference to what the state guidelines are for uh meal service in schools. The second, we discussed the listing of the Monmouth County Acting Epidemiologist should be deleted from the paragraph on page twenty-nine related to the impaneling of a committee of independent health and medical experts. Um and the reason behind this, the county has not had an active epidemiologist available and the district uh consultations have been primarily with the Middle Town Department of Health. The third one was the school schedule grid uh should be modified to include additional student instructional time in the examples of PM staff activities. The next policy we discussed was um what's on the agenda for the second reading. The first one is discussing proposed change in terminology in policy regulation fifty-three twenty, which is the immunization policy. Strauss Esme had recommended that um we revise the term students to be named child throughout the document throughout the regulation to align the language with New Jersey Administrative Code. District administration did research whether keeping the term student would cause any potential legal ramifications and we were informed by our legal counsel that there are no ramifications, that we will, we would be able to leave it as student and not change it to child. And that basically came about because we do have students in the district who would not be considered legal children uh at any point. So uh that's where that came from. We also discussed the use of the word appropriate when referring to the nurse's review of continuing medical exemption information. So we wanted to have some kind of clarification on what the word appropriate meant when the nurses were reviewing those uh medical exemptions. We don't have a date for the next meeting right now, and that's about all we talked about. Any questions? Or Amy, did I forget anything?
No, I, you know, I think we will, you know, we should plan to have another meeting, you know, maybe in March. We did get some new alerts in and if we can review those and discuss with the committee, that would be fine. Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Curriculum, Mr. Little and Mrs. Peggus.
John, are you okay with me to go?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Feel free to chime in if I leave anything out. We had a very uh comprehensive agenda planned for the evening of January twenty-fifth. However, the majority of our discussion became very focused on two particular topics. That evening, two of the topics that we had planned to discuss uh were uh the new course curriculum uh and writing that is currently taking place for implementation of classes during next school year. And with that in mind, we had Mrs. Morales attend to give a highlight, a special focus on the area of social studies. And we also had a second topic of um ideas uh and ways to increase and enhance instruction and learning opportunities as we continue to progress through uh the district's phased reopening plan. So um to that end, Mr. Kirkpatrick, Mr. Ranella, Mr. Milano, the principal at Fairview, and Mr. Lawson, principal at Thorn, also joined that meeting. Just going back to the topic of the new social study standards, we also talked about specific state regulations that the district is required um to attend to and implement and adhere to each year. The reason for the focus on social studies was because um it in last summer, the state released revised newly, new and revised New Jersey Student Learning Standards. in last summer, the state released revised newly, new and revised New Jersey Student Learning Standards for the specific area of social studies. We had long anticipated this and they were in the works for many years. The dish, the state has put a specific mission and vision when it comes to social studies instruction to ensure that this instruction provides all learners with knowledge, skills, attitudes, different perspectives that are needed to become active and informed, as well as contributing members of their local, state, national, and even more of emphasis this year, their global communities. So, the vision for this education, two new pieces have come to fruition. And that centers around the application and an understanding of critical media literacy skills when students are utilizing techno, technology to learn or communicate or otherwise collaborate with diverse people around the world or in their local communities. We know that there has been significant advancements in social media and access to information through digital literacy and technology. And the state wants to ensure that our students are prepared to act responsibly and also be well-informed when accessing that information. Along those lines, they also want to ensure that students can discern fact from falsehood and critically analyze this information to make sure or to assure its validity and relevance. So, Mrs. Morales then went on to highlight for the committee that there are four main new anchor or what they call disciplinary concepts or focus of learning when it comes to K-12 instruction in social studies. And they center on civics, government, and human rights. The next one is geography, people, and the environment. And then it moves to economics, innovation, and technology. And the last focus of learning is history, culture, and perspectives. So, in all grade levels, those four areas or focus of learning points are integrated into the, into the standards and therefore in our curriculum and our instruction across the district. In terms of the regulations that we are required to show evidence of that we adopt and implement each year include the Amistad Law, which requires that every board of education incorporates information regarding the contributions of African Americans to our country in an appropriate place in the curriculum at both elementary and secondary levels. The next regulation is the Holocaust Law, which requires that every district include instruction on the Holocaust and, and different examples of genocide in an appropriate place in the curriculum in both elementary and secondary instruction as well. And this instruction is meant to further emphasize the personal responsibility that each citizen bears to fight racism and hatred whenever and wherever it happens, and that is right from the legislation, the regulation. And then the last regulation, which was recently implemented this past September, is the LGBT and Disabilities Law. And that requires that the district includes instruction for students on the political, economic, and social contributions of persons with disabilities and lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people in an appropriate place in the curriculum at the middle school and high school level and as part of the district's implementation of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The board does have the obligation to have policies and procedures in place also pertaining to the selection of the instructional materials that will be used to implement these, this requirement. And we did do revisions last year in anticipation, knowing that we were told that this law was going to go into effect in September, and we did training with all of our middle school and high school social studies teachers and other areas like mathematics and English, the English department staff to ensure that they were able to incorporate this meaningfully and appropriately into their curriculum and instruction. And the last thing that, there was other, there was a lot of other discussion, but the other area of importance that we talked about was the work that the social studies and language arts departments are doing, the English departments at all levels. But most especially in middle school and high school, to really integrate literacy standards and social study standards to make it meaningful for students. There's a lot of use of nonfiction text when it comes to literacy instruction, and there are a lot of standards aligned to nonfiction reading and writing skills. So, we want to make sure that it's interwoven and it's a meaningful way to, for students to learn and practice these skills and, and different standards and, and show that they can master them. So, that was really the highlight of Mrs. Morales's conversation. Then we spent another significant portion of the meeting talking about those various ways that we could continue to enhance or increase instructional time during the day, whether it's in person, in the morning hours, or in the afternoon times when students and teachers are getting back together. So, to that end, you know, we talked about different ways that we've been using assessments, more specifically district assessments like Linkit, to monitor engaged student academic achievement based on their progress from last year to this past fall and now more recently in the last couple of weeks. And that's really important in order for teachers to adjust and differentiate their instruction, more specifically for small group instruction and to ensure that students are on track to meet their grade level standards. We also talked about ways that we're compacting our curriculum. In other words, prioritizing anchor or key standards, essential skills and concepts, given, you know, that there are students who have less time in person, so we want to make sure that we're compacting and prioritizing when they are in person, instruction on those key anchors, key anchor standards. We also talked about possible schedule adjustments, and Mrs. Walker has, has already talked about in her update the more recent changes, because this meeting happened before all those decisions were made. And we also talked about the expansion of the school day for special education class programs like Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Wright have already talked about. So, our next curriculum meeting is planned for this upcoming Monday night, February 22nd. And we have another very aggressive and robust agenda, I will say. Did I leave anything out, Mr. Little?
No, I think you're right. I think, like you said, we're talking about the curriculum that's going to be part of the next year's budget is going to be put in place. I think that, like you said, that might change a little bit. And then the next meeting, we're going to talk about. Talk about how we measure academic, I'm not going to, I guess I'm not going to use the word slippage, but how do we measure where we are? Based on, you know, the hybrid model that we've been doing, not only because of what the impact is, but going forward, some of the adjustments we might have to make in certain space in case kids need to be caught up, like for example, math and things like that. I know you and Mr. Carey can give a really good presentation last year, but this will be an update, you know, like I guess four or five months. I guess that was four or five months ago, so that'll be an interesting topic to see of how we measure that and what our thoughts are going forward.
Yeah, we, we are wrapping up the second round of Linkit assessment, which is an important formative assessment that we use with students to gauge their learning and their growth over the course of the year with their grade level standards. So, we are wrapping up middle school and high school testing and analysis right now, so that's going to be a particular focus on Monday night's meeting. And we will be finalizing assessment at the elementary level in the upcoming weeks. So, that'll be something that we will, we are anxiously awaiting and want to report out in March.
Okay, thank you so much. Next, we have student activities with Leonora and Mr. Ranella.
We didn't.
No, we didn't.
Your curriculum meeting.
Oh, forgot.
We did that last month.
Yeah, there was no meeting.
This month, that was next month.
You listed, but there was no meeting.
All right, shared services.
Services.
Real quick, though, Ms. Menewes, I just want to, we don't, we did not meet, but we do have an item on the voting agenda. And it's just a research study from a Rutgers University graduate student. And they're looking to conduct research on current practices regarding concussion management and how school psychologists aid students in reintegrating into school after experiencing concussion. So, this student is going to be emailing our school psychologist a survey that they'll be able to voluntarily participate in.
Okay, thank you so much. Shared services, Mr. Capone and Mrs. Darty.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Right, so February 8th, last week, last Monday, we met. We started speaking about Route 36 redevelopment update. So, the township representative indicated that the communication about the redevelopment plans for Route 36 corridor will hopefully start coming out this summer. The plan will contain certain parameters of what type of development can occur within the designated redevelopment area. The committee discussed what impact the redevelopment plans will have on the value of the Port Monmouth property and potential, potential next steps for the district related to the property. Concepts and ideas included the sale of property and/or partnership projects were also discussed. The BOE shared services, the committee reviewed the current collaborative efforts between the township and the Board of Ed. We spoke about the growing recycling collection, the trade services, fuel purchasing, and the use of fields. The update on the Nut Swamp Normandy Park project, unfortunately, hit a little bit of a snag. They are having some unexpected soil issues to deal with and the project causing some delays, but is still expected to be completed in late March, early April, pending any more snow, obviously. Field permitting, the township representative related that the design of Normandy Park project resulted in a loss of lit baseball fields, which is causing scheduling issues for the league that needs lighted baseball fields based to run their spring activities. The township representative requested that they be allowed to permit community use of the High School South RC baseball field and reference the township's installation of lights on that field many years ago. Ms. Walker and Mrs. Darty responded that they would discuss this with the direct district athletic director and stated concerns that the treatment of the field by the community groups poses damage on the field and issues for the district's teams. There would also be scheduling issues to work out related to postponements of district games due to the weather. Janet Delight, recreation director, also put forth requests to move the Link Cross Lake Football League permit off the Bayview Fields and back to Thompson. The league does not want to play at Bayview anymore. In addition, the league wants to start a spring season this year, which would then result the league playing two seasons of flag football per year. The district expressed concerns over the effect of the use of Thompson Fields of flag football on conditions of the field. The district has been working on improving condition of the Thompson Field over the past few years, and this would be taking a big step backwards and maintaining condition. The district will discuss this request with the athletic director and the facilities director. Janet Delight mentioned the combination lock was being installed at the Croydon Hall turf field, similar to the lockets Nut Swamp to deter unauthorized usage of the facilities. I don't believe we have another date, I think it's Monday.
No, we do, it's, it's the second Monday, I think, every month, so whatever that is.
On March 9th, March 10th.
Mr. Capone, what representative or representatives met with you on behalf of the township?
Sure, so we had the mayor, Tony Perry, deputy mayor, Rick Hyville, community member, Tony Fiore, township administrator, Tony Mercantante, township engineer, Ted Maloney, and township recreational director, Janet Delight.
And.
And representatives was myself, board president, Ms. Menewes, board member, Leonora Cabaniti, board member, Tobacco, Mary Ellen Walker, superintendent, and business administrator, Ms. Amy Darty.
And Mr. Fiore was there in what capacity?
He's a community member, which is needed.
Thank you.
No problem.
Great. We haven't had strategic planning, so personnel. Mrs. O'Hagan, did you want to speak about the job fairs?
Yes, thank you. We're going to be very methodical in our process to reach out and try to recruit new staff members. As Mrs. Darty mentioned earlier, we don't know how many retirements we're going to have. We know we already have about 10 or 11 submitted for the 2021-22 school year, and we do anticipate more. So, we're going to be taking advantage of a, an event that TCNJ has hosted for many years. Normally, it's been held in person. It's a job fair where students who are in the field of education, who are interested in, in employment, register to interview with people from all different districts. There's been a great deal of interest. They're doing it digitally this year. We will be attending approximately 10 administrators, including myself. Will be attending the first one on March 26th. Prior to that, we will receive the resumes of all of the different students who are interested in going into teaching and what their majors are, what their certificates are. We'll review the resumes in advance and we will select the candidates that we would most like to interview. And then TCNJ will take care of scheduling those interviews so that we can maximize the people that are there to do the interviewing, to see as many candidates as possible. Then we'll be going there again for a April 16th job fair, again at TCNJ. And we'll be getting a whole new set of resumes of additional candidates from TCNJ who are interested in seeking employment. We will do the same thing, review. All of our administrators are helping us target key areas where we know we may have jobs that are going to be vacant and what are the high-demand areas that we're looking for. American Sign Language, we know right out front, is one that we're definitely going to be looking to recruit some teachers if possible for the district. So, we're really, we're excited about that. We're going to really try to do this in a focused way so that we can see as many candidates as possible. We're in the process of either creating a flyer informational brochure that can either be an embedded link in the Google Meet, or actually in the Zoom Meet, or a QR code that we can put on the screen during our interview, so students can scan it to have an information packet about Middletown, all we have to offer, what our programs are, how many schools we have, and some of the things that will make us seem to be an appealing employer for students that are graduating. Then we're also going to participate in a similar type job fair that's being held as a consortium of all the private colleges and, and universities in New Jersey. And that's going to be on April, let me get that date here. April 30th, we will again be participating, that same group of approximately 10 administrators in a four to seven o'clock evening interview session where we will once again put out the message to determine which particular candidates we're looking for. And in this case, they're going to try to align candidates with the certifications and the qualifications for the jobs we know we're going to have open to interview with us. And we will be, of course, reaching out to those people when jobs actually get posted to ask them to go into our application system and apply for those jobs. And we will, you know, keep a careful record of who are the people we are hoping to attract into Middletown.
And Mrs. O'Hagan, to that, to that end, I'll just steal a few minutes and highlight some of those key areas that we are specifically looking to recruit for. We know we have a captive audience right now and it's an advanced discussion, but we are working on our district posting that will be coming out shortly for all of these positions. So, if anyone is watching and you know any students who will be graduating with education degrees in the spring, please get the word out that we are looking for, as Mrs. O'Hagan mentioned, American Sign Language instructors and other world language teachers at the high school level. A high school technology teacher, middle school math, middle school English language arts, middle school special education, and most especially our learning, learning language disabilities course at the middle school level, that class. Elementary classroom teachers, we're always interviewing and recruiting for those, as well as special education at the elementary level. We will have vacancy for preschool teacher this year due to a retirement and elementary speech teacher. And just a quick update, we actually are going to do some advanced interviewing beginning next month. As many people know in the community, Mr. Lawson has been approved to move to High School South effective July 1st as the principal at High School South. So, we have started the process for finding his replacement as principal at Thorn Middle School. The community stakeholder survey just closed this weekend, and we, the posting for that position is going to go live tomorrow. And the committee, the interview search committee members were emailed today. We have parent representatives, staff representatives, and administrators who will be on that committee. It's about 12 people. And they are scheduled to conduct interviews on Wednesday, March 3rd. And the goal of that committee is to have a recommendation once finalists go to the superintendent level for interview on next month's Board of Education voting agenda.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate to the public that's listening, if you know any students that are graduating or have graduated and are looking for jobs in these positions that Mrs. O'Hagan and Mrs. Picas have just talked about, please encourage them to apply. Middletown hires so many of our former students and we're proud to do that. It's just sometimes people don't realize we're looking for these positions. That's why we wanted to have this discussion along with all the job fairs that we'll be attending and recruiting good candidates. So, you know, spread the word, get the applications filled out, the more, the better for Middletown. So, you know, spread the word, get the applications filled out. The more, the better for Middletown. So, thank you ladies for doing that. We really appreciate it. So wide search and and hard positions and big shoes to fill. Um, next, I'd like to go on to legislative. Mr. Capone?
Sure. Uh, legislative meeting, meeting we met on February ninth. I have to say it was a really nice meeting and uh actually a committee that really has been, I guess, defunct for the last couple of years, but we're kicking it off again. And uh, we were really speaking about the discussion on current legislative issues impacting New Jersey public schools. Uh, Senator Dexon O'Scanlon uh attended, he updated us on the committee on the uh chapter forty, I'm sorry, the hot topics, including debate over the relocation, reallocation of school aid under S two, the impact of the chapter forty-four health benefits, uh, the accessibility of COVID nineteen vaccine for teachers and special special education funding. Uh, committee relayed to the Senator that O'Scanlon of the information regarding the negative financial impact on chapter forty-four is having on our district in Middletown. The estimated additional school aid loss that is expected for twenty-one, twenty-two budget, the importance of having COVID nineteen vaccination available for our staff to facilitate greater scale of in-person instruction, the continuing need for special education funding to more closely follow the students instead of being allocated based on broadly applied percentages. Uh, Senator Senator O'Scanlon, it's Mary Ellen and Amy Darney who set up a meeting with him, which I believe you should have.
And we spoke to him yesterday.
A very nice productive meeting from what I heard.
Yes, just for some follow-up information for him to take to, you know, his meetings.
Good.
Particularly very good. And he was very interested in that chapter forty-four.
Forty-four, really big topic.
Chapter forty-four.
Something that could cause us a great downfall, I guess. Um, I think the next thing we spoke about, we had a C L B partners join the the uh meeting with us, uh John Bombadieri. Um, C L B partners was there. Um, so that is the lobbyist that we were looking for, the uh that we uh went out to get a price on. Um, he actually already started helping us, I believe, with the H A C uh issue that we had, right?
Uh, and his partner Karen Comiskey.
And Karen Comiskey, yes.
Yes, she.
Well, the issue that we had with the N J D O E of trying to get this approved and doing a little bit of help with it for us. Um, they did submit a proposal to us and I believe we spoke after that and we said maybe we can get a little bit lower.
Which we did, yeah.
If we wanted that twenty percent lower from what they originally asked us for.
Right, they reduced it to twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, alright, so they were originally at three thousand, now we're at twenty-five hundred dollars a month. And uh the next thing I think we spoke about was S O S support of our students, support our students, I think uh myself along with uh Mrs. Cat, Mrs. Um Minuas is going to be starting this uh committee and seeing what it, what it's really all about. It's a group comprised of a hundred and two school districts that are losing aid as a result of the aid reallocation implemented by S two. Uh, Middletown was a participant in the group's over request to the N J D O E for the compilation of the property value and income wealth factors of the state aid allocation formula. S O S is compiling executive summary from all its member districts of the impacts of S two, the pandemic, and chapter forty-four. Middletown has submitted the request information. S O S next step is to schedule meeting with the governor's office, assembly office representatives, and senator office representatives. Hopefully by the end of this week for the following week. And I believe we are going to be uh speaking with them in the coming week, right, Mary Ellen?
They're also trying to, they're hopefully putting together, um, something that I was hoping to do a while ago is um, a parent groups working with that group and helping us lobby for funding. So, once we have that meeting and we find out what it's all about, we'll report back to the board on um what the next steps and what they expect from our school district.
And we put on the tentative date of April thirteenth for our next meeting. But I believe uh, Ms. Doherty and Ms. Walker, we've been in contact with Senator if needed and whatever we can use their assistance for.
Could we talk a little more about the lobbyists? Um, how we're going to go forward with that? Um, are we gonna, are we gonna ask them to come and speak to the board?
Whatever you think is uh appropriate.
I know it's not a lot of money, twenty-five hundred dollars, and and I think that, you know, we've been paying Garden State Coalition, and I think if we stop doing that and we put our funds toward that, it might be um more beneficial to us. But um, I I would like the rest of the board to understand what this lobbyist is about.
Uh, we can certainly invite them, maybe to the March workshop. Would that be appropriate, you know?
Yeah, that'll be fine, yeah. Cause you know, you hear lobbyists and and they're, they are starting to help us, but if we're going to go forward with it, I think everybody on the board should be able to know exactly what it is that they're they're planning to do for us.
Well, as an example, not only for money and funding, but we're having a problem getting approval across.
Exactly.
They're hoping to push that along so we can start and not lose this this year go by and then we don't have it this September.
Yeah, everybody should see the benefits. Um, you know, we've been talking about doing this for a long time. We've been talking about a grant writer. Um, so as these things come to fruition, I think it would be great to um have them come and meet the board.
What is the name of the lobbying firm that you're talking about?
C L B Partners.
And how were, how was this board or how were you and Mrs. Minuas introduced to that firm?
So I believe in the last update, I don't think you were.
We weren't introduced to the firm.
No, we spoke, actually. So the last update I gave in shared services.
When did you speak, when did, when did you speak to this firm?
So, let me speak.
Okay.
So the last update we had with shared services, I guess you didn't hear it, but C L B were looking to get into an agreement with the township for shared services. The administration believes it's more beneficial for us not to get into a shared services agreement rather than we do it on our own because, and I do agree, when you are contracting somebody yourself, it seems like it would do more for you versus just to tag along on somebody else's back.
Yeah, but how was this, Frank, excuse me, how was this firm introduced to you?
Like I just said, shared services meeting last month, we spoke about this. This was on the agenda.
With the township?
Yes.
Yes, shared services, Tom.
Right. And do they, do they do work for Middletown Township?
Yes.
Shared Services, Tom, yes. They already currently have them. They spend about five, six thousand dollars a month, my correct and say, that evening. They're about five, six thousand dollars a month. They were willing to take us on for another fifteen hundred dollars a month. But now at twenty-five hundred dollars a month, we have them on our own, which that's why we're looking to do this on our own versus sharing the service.
Understood.
Yeah, if I could, I mean, I actually would be interested in hearing um from them next month in terms of of what services they can provide. I know uh over the past couple of years, we sort of toyed with this idea or even trying to get, you know, not only members of the public uh to be able to lobby on funding issues and and especially even around our special education costs, which you know, we do not receive full funding for every student that needs our services. Um, but also trying to have board members lobby. And I know there was at one point, there seemed to be some discussion as to whether or not board members are allowed to participate in any of that lobbying. Um, I'd be curious to honestly hear more opinions about that because I think that's something that I've expressed that I would be interested in doing and willing to do and putting in time. Um, you know, I went to Trenton a couple of times with uh Dr. George in terms of trying to raise more funding around our special education um services needs. So I think it's something that we definitely need. Um, in terms of the S O S project, and if I may not be remembering this correctly, but we were approached once before to join the coalition, and I think in the very beginning we did. But then we didn't move any further because I think there was talk at one point that they wanted to hire a lobbyist themselves for the entire group, or there was some kind of issue with funding um that we may have had to contribute. So we didn't go any further with them, but it now it sounds like we're going to be entering back into the coalition.
We, not, not exactly.
Yeah.
We've, we've continued our involvement with them. I mean, basically the, and the extent of the involvement is, you know, keeping informed, uh, sharing of information, getting updates from the group. What you're thinking of is uh when they file their over request for the details of the state aid formula.
Right, that's what it was.
They hired, they actually hired an attorney because the state originally declined their request and they hired an attorney to file a lawsuit to have that over request honored. Uh, we did not contribute to that litigation, but there were certain districts who went forward with it. They were, they got an answer from the state. It's not something that's uh easily understandable. But they did go ahead and share that with the entire group, even if we didn't participate with the financial contribution. And and Devon.
Now, now I remember, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. As far as the group goes, they they reached out and asked us to meet with them other school districts, so we're just going to see what that is about. We didn't sign up for anything. We didn't commit to anything. We're just going to see what it is that they have to offer and what they have to offer to our community to get them involved. So once we find that out, we'll report back and then we'll decide what our next steps will be. If that's what we want to do. It's just an informative invitation to come and hear what it is that they have planned. So we figured it has nothing, we have nothing to lose to go and listen to what they have to say. Yeah, we've, Dr. George and I went to a few of their meetings over the past couple of years. Uh, they're also, this group's also in the process of, I would say, recalibrating itself. A few of their leaders were superintendents who recently retired. Uh, so there's new people stepping in the forefront and and trying to, you know, get the group to coalesce around the uh issues and and make inroads with legislators throughout the state. It's it's just another step to try to reach out and help us get more funding. So we'll see what they have.
Sorry, Joan. Yeah, but I just want to say to your point or to your question too, I was in that meeting and um correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, um, but the lobbyists, um, you know, part of what they can do is get you in those meetings. So even though, you know, especially with your experience, if you wanted, you want to continue to do that or advocate for anything for the the special needs or any other topics, um, they can just help facilitate that and get meetings that we necessarily might not have gotten into before. So um, I think, you know, you have a conversation and kind of setting our goals as a district. Um, obviously they'd be working for us. We're not just going along with whatever their agenda is, but looking for them to fill our needs. So I think it'd be a great idea for you to, you know, with your experience in that and going forward.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, you know, this, this is something that I'd be happy to try and invest more time in. Um, sort of based on, you know, my experience in the past too. But, I mean, I agree. I mean, I think there's benefits that we can get, you know, from having our own lobbyists. And I have to say, like, you know, I was a little concerned, honestly, in terms of what that potential cost could be. Uh, because it can be, you know, particularly high in my experience, but that is, you know, pretty, pretty low, pretty reasonable.
Yeah, and if it doesn't work, the other thing is we're not committed. So if we use them for a couple of months and then we find that we're not really getting it where we wanted to go.
Right.
No, you know, we just let it go. We're not tied to anything. We're not tied to the township. So we kind of all felt really good about it. Um, and uh, the company, you know, they, they, the guy was nice. I didn't meet the, his partner, but um, I thought it would be a good, a good move, so.
Yeah, I'm definitely interested to hear more.
Good, thank you.
Glad.
See, when we spoke to Senator O'Scanlon, Mrs. Walker and I the other day, he was interested in possibly connecting with the S O S group as well. Okay, the more people, the better. We need to start getting our fair share here. Okay, that's the end of the committee meetings and updates. Do we have any old business that anybody would like to discuss?
Well, I think, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, if I can just there, Jack, I, the only thing I want to bring everyone's attention to is, you know, we do have a draft of the voting meeting agenda here, and if anybody, uh, it it's been posted for everybody to review. Uh, I know Mr. Rinaldo spoke about uh one of the items. Uh, i- if there's any other questions on any of the items that are on here, now would be uh the time.
Okay.
Before they go on the voting meeting for next week.
Has everybody seen the draft agenda? Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Doherty. You reminded me of that. Okay, old business. Done? New business? I, I just have, oh, God.
Uh, I'm not sure if it's new business, but um, Ms. Walker, when's the next time high school students can um elect to go back full?
March fifteenth. It's March, March fifteenth.
Can you hear that, John? Did you hear that?
Yes, March fifteenth. And that's no exceptions. I know there's been a few sort of questions about that regarding in particular seniors who might have not made the right election. So we're saying there's no exception to that rule even for seniors?
Uh, they would have to call the school to to find out, you know, it depends on, you know, what their election was, you know, what what it looks like in terms of what they selected and when they called and said they might have made a mistake or something, or if there's room. So that's um, that's something that's being handled at the school level. So I recommend they call uh the administrators.
Call the, call the principal or one of the vice principals.
Yes. Okay, because we are, we are working on a, on a percentage that we don't want to go over um in terms of, you know, having that many students in in the building at the same time.
No, I understood. I was just wondering, so I know that, you know, the seniors have been through, like a lot of students have been through a lot and just, you know, the end of the day, they're, they're left with a few months in their, in their, in their last year, and I was just asking. So they can, so they can talk to the principal or one of the assistant principals.
Okay, I just had one thing and it's really on the uh voting meeting for next month. And I know Mrs. Caruso is on with us right now. So um, I kind of would like to thank you for all your years of service in Middletown. Even though I know you're not retiring tomorrow, but for me, this is a perfect opportunity to address you. You've been here over forty years. A big part of Middletown, a lot of great changes that you've been a part of and improvements and your dedication and your work, work ethic is impeccable. I, I remember driving by here many weekends and seeing your, your car here on a weekend working. Um, I always wondered, what, what is she doing? It's, you know, the weekend, but um I just, I just can't tell you enough how much we appreciate everything that you have done in your career here in Middletown. And and we wish you the best and happy and healthy retirement.
Enjoyed.
Thanks, Margie.
Thank you.
Any other?
I'm not going anywhere yet. I'm not going anywhere yet.
No, we know, we know, but but the way things are, we never get to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other new business, I'd like to open the opportunity up to the public.
Um, again, anybody who would like to make a comment, um, you can find your raised hand icon at the bottom of the dashboard uh by selecting that in the place that's in queue and we'll bring you into the room. Uh, please just provide your name and address for the record. You know, a few hands up, we'll start with M J Huesler.
Hello?
Is that me?
No.
It looks like they may be having some trouble with their microphone, so we will leave them uh, leave them in the queue. Move on from, we'll bring in Rachel Penau.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I have one main thing I was calling about tonight, but before I start, there are just three quick comments slash questions on stuff that was discussed tonight. Um, the first thing regarding the public budget meetings that have happened in the past. I understand the format might be a little different this year and you do most, most of the discussing in workshops. Um, I know the past two years, I've really appreciated being able to hear the full board discuss the budget and get to listen to everybody's questions and everybody's kind of trade-offs about where money might get shifted around. Um, so I'd like, I, I feel like if the discussions and the questions happen in committee where the public cannot see or hear them, we miss out on that. Um, so if possible, knowing that the presentations by Mrs. Doherty are going to be happening at the workshop meetings, maybe we build in some time to the agenda for the board as a whole to react and ask questions that the public can hear. Um, I would, I as a member of the public would appreciate that. I just don't want to miss out on the discussion because I think it's extremely valuable. Um, second thing, um, I had a question about um on the different committees, I heard that we have a community member slot on the shared services committee, um, which I didn't realize was something that existed. And I'm wondering, does that exist on all the committees? Um, or is it just shared services? And if it is, when did that start? Uh, because that was news to me. And I think it's actually an incredible opportunity if you can have community members on the committees. Um, and I'd raise my hand for any one of them if it, if it's an option. Um, the next thing regarding the lobbyist, I know that I've heard this discussed multiple times in the past about reaching out and trying to to make some headway in Trenton. Um, I know that this lobbyist approached. Um, I know that this lobbyist approached you guys. If you were to decide to move forward with a lobbyist, would this have to go out for RFP? Um, or would you meet with others before locking into one of them would be my question. And then finally, the reason I actually had planned to, to speak tonight was um, I know there's been a lot of discussion about moving, you know, into phase six and reopening. There's been a lot of community focus on that, a lot of energy, a lot of passion. And I think at times it's gotten a little bit antagonistic, which um, kind of breaks my heart because I think overall, we all agree that what this pandemic has taught us is that five-day full-time in-person instruction is what's best for our kids. Um, and I wanted to give credit to Middletown because even though our current situation is obviously not ideal and not what anybody wants, I also know it's, it's much, much harder to deliver on for you guys. It's more difficult, more frustrating, and it's not something we expected to last this long. I, I don't think anybody thought when this started last March that we'd be coming on a full year of it. Um, so I wanted to try to shift the focus a bit and just make sure that you all know how appreciated um, all of you are, the teachers, the staff, the administrators, that you haven't given up on this, that you've kept with it, that you keep improving, that you're moving towards getting our kids in five days. Um, so we started a, an online thank you card a couple of weeks ago that we invited some parents to sign um, through various social media channels. And as of tonight, we had seven hundred and twenty-two parents sign that card. Um, and they also, many of them provided individual comments on it. So I emailed that tonight while you were in executive session. Um, and I'm hoping that Superintendent Walker, you can share that with all the people in the district, just so they can see how genuinely appreciative we all are. Um, I can read the text to you, just in case there's anybody listening. Um, this is what the letter had said. Dear Middletown teachers, staff and administrators, we know that you are working harder than ever in the most challenging circumstances of your career so far. And while this pandemic and all the subsequent challenges of hybrid plus virtual plus in-person education have taken a toll on all of us, they have also opened our eyes. The good you bring to our kids' lives goes so far beyond academics. You create confidence and stability. You help instill values and work ethic. You make them feel valued and important. You broaden their understanding of the world around them and you help equip them to interact with that world. We have learned that while as parents, it will always be our responsibility to raise our kids and raise them well, we could not do it without you. As the saying goes, you don't know what you've got till it's gone. Now we know what we had and we will never take five-day full-time in-person school or you for granted again. Thank you for all that you do and we all look forward to getting back to normal whenever that may be. Sincerely, Middletown parents. So thank you all so much. I, I hope you know that despite what the conversations may be day to day and how zoomed in they are on getting forward, getting forward, getting forward, that we're all really appreciative of how far you've taken us this year from last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel.
Hey, next. Next is Douglas Yosi.
Hey, it's Douglas Yosi, uh, twenty-four Harbor Street. My question is uh, about the health insurance in terms of the uh, self-insured issue. That the fact that we haven't done that yet in Middletown is costing us probably a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in costs. And to self-insure doesn't take away anything from the teachers. It does save us money by self-insuring and you can buy cash off the insurance for large claims on those issues. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next is. Next is Stacy Jones.
Hi, Stacy, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, everyone.
Stacy, can we just.
Just to echo. For Stacy Jones, Lehigh Drive in Linkcroft. Um, to echo Rachel, yes, I, I've said it every time I think I've gotten on for public comment, but thank you for all of your hard work throughout this year and every year. It's appreciated. I wanted to um, just go on record. I sent an email with this information. I do have a bit of concern about the plan that is pushing forward next week at the middle school level. Um, with the cohorts completely intermixing with one another and over the course of the week to get possibly one extra day of instruction. I believe you determined you couldn't move to phase six because you had to stay within a certain percentage of the students, uh, whether it be sixty or sixty-five percent within the building. Uh, so in trying to craft this new proposal, you essentially created a structure where every student in cohort A and every student in cohort B comes into contact with one another throughout the course of the week. Um, with a hundred percent, they have a hundred percent cross exposure. So up till this point in the year, cohort A and cohort B had zero cross exposure because they attended school on completely different days. You had now are doubling the exposure of every staff and student member in the building for the potential gain of one extra day per week, if it happens to be a four-day week, not a three-day week. I emailed because on February twelfth, as you're putting this plan into motion, the CDC came out with new guidelines and specifically said, um, I quote, "The U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention said students, teachers and staff should be required to wear masks at all times and should maintain distances of at least six feet from one another as much as possible, with students divided into small groups that don't mix with one another." This was February twelfth. Now, it says many of these recommendations, like mask wearing and physical distancing, were in the agency's previous guidelines, but this time though, the agency is urging schools to implement them. So you're now taking the middle schools starting next Monday, you're adding this, the two groups to the point that they're a hundred percent mixed. There's really no more cohorts because even though there's only three out of four in the course of a two-day window, they're in, in contact with a hundred percent of those cohorts. And you're taking whatever you had of six feet distancing when you were able to implement it, removing that. You're taking rooms like a science lab where you might have had one student at a lab desk and you are now going to put two or more students at that desk. Um, and, and there's no distancing. So you're essentially doing everything that they're urging you not to do right now. When Monmouth County is still second in the state of New Jersey as of today, it has a positivity, positivity rate of cases over ten percent right now. Okay, when you implemented cohorts in September to bring these kids back to school where they had to be separated to A and B, the positivity rate was three percent. We're at ten percent right now. If you're really putting staff and student safety first, this is not the time to be giving a hundred percent exposure for these cohorts. And I've been told over and over again by Mrs. Walker that staff and student safety are the priority, but putting this plan in place for a two-twenty-two implementation just flies in the face of that. And I did receive a response by Mrs. Walker today stating, "We follow CDC and New Jersey Department of Health recommendations and implement them as much as feasible," which is the recommendation. However, they're telling you six feet distancing and not to mix cohorts. You already knew you couldn't always implement six feet distancing, but now you're doubling, you're taking half of a separate cohort and putting it in. So it's three out of four groups are together on a given day and then now you're rotating.
Stacy, Stacy, I'm sorry, but you have to wrap it up. You're almost to your five-minute point.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. My point is you're, you're commingling these cohorts to a point and it's a risk to student and staff safety. And as a parent of a phase five student who has not had more than two consecutive weeks in a building without them having to shut down and go virtual, I'm concerned you're setting the middle schools up to be virtual all the time. And I really think you need to consider these facts before you push forward with this on Monday. And I just have one quick question for Ms. Tobacco and then I will be done. You, you mentioned earlier at the beginning.
Please direct your questions to me, please.
Okay, I would like clarification. I'm sorry. I would like clarification on Ms. Tobacco's statement earlier saying that um, they were reassessing the policy that had to do with lunchtime. I wasn't quite clear on whether there's a change in policy being made within the district and how that aligns to what the current state guidelines are. And I would appreciate clarification on that, please. Ms. Minuweez or Ms. Tobacco. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Next, I don't have a name. I just have initials. Uh, name is JB. Provide your full name and address for the record for us. I'd be appreciative.
Hi, Jacqueline Bailey, twenty-seven Crest Road. I just wanted to um, say how excited um, our two children were to return to school yesterday on Tuesday to meet some friends that were in their classes in separate cohorts that they haven't seen all school year. And um, you know, just share their excitement with meeting new friends in their class and the experience that they had to see the smiles on their faces and just um, you know, the excitement that they expressed was just um, wonderful. Um, and just in reference to the last caller, uh, our other child goes to um, a Catholic preschool and they don't keep their masks on that, you know, the entire uh, one hundred percent of the time because they are in preschool. Um, although the, you know, the school does enforce it and they have them on for most of the time. They are three years old, so they do come off. There are some shared uh, toys that they use. They are not doing six feet distance one hundred percent of the time because they are three years old. Um, and they, we have not had to shut down. They are doing a very wonderful job there. We are very happy, excuse me, with how everything has panned out this year. And there have not been positive cases that have been causing the schools to close. Um, everything is, is really operating uh, successfully and we couldn't be happier. So just a reminder, because I think some people might not realize, um, I've seen on social media, some people didn't have the information. I think they thought that moving forward with phase six meant that they had to have their child continue going in person. But the option to keep your child virtual is still, is still there. So if there are fears of collapsing cohorts and students getting in, in, within six feet of each other, they don't have to go to school. They can stay home and do the, and fully virtual if they are still, you know, uh, um, in fear of those rules being broken and more cross exposure, so they said. So that's all. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you so much.
Next is Vera Pasake.
Hi, Vera Pasake, um, Eschire Drive, Middletown. Um, I wanted to ask if um, having uh, cameras on during virtual learning can be added to a committee agenda, whether it's in technology or some sort. Um, being on um, pandemic response teams, we hear um, um, from teachers that they're having a hard time doing the true assessment of students. Um, there are students that are in person, feel they're at a disadvantage because the students at home turn off cameras and can um, can turn on their phones, talk to friends, um, you know, look at notes, whatever they need to do. Um, there are also other districts that we know of that are requiring cameras on for quizzes and tests. Um, and I believe there is technology out there that could cause the background to kind of fade um, around the student if you're worried about privacy. So I was hoping that that could be raised um, in a committee report, um, committee meeting of some sort. I know, I believe, I can't imagine being a teacher and teaching to a whole bunch of emojis. Um, and I also feel it's good for the kids. Uh, when my son was virtual, I encouraged him to keep the camera on so that he would stay engaged. So I, I believe that should be something that should be added um, to one of the committees. Um, also, I'd like to thank Mrs. Caruso as well uh, for all her years in the district. Um, I would always get a kick out of her um, reports, um, at board meetings, particularly when it had to do with math. I've never seen anybody more excited or engaged about talking about um, math or the subject matters that she enjoyed the most. So I just wanted to thank her for all of her time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to try MJ Huesler one more time. William Jerry with us?
Hello?
Does not, maybe experiencing uh, trouble with their, might as well, if they are, they can certainly uh, email board, email any questions or comments. That, not seeing any more heads raised.
All right. And no one else is, is uh, raising their hand. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Film over.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstention. Stay safe, everybody. Looks like we're gonna have a tough storm.